The Harwich Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. It's being held via remote participation only. Access is available through GoToMeeting.com and live broadcast on Channel.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry, I forgot to do that.
Want me to do it again?
Nope, nope, that's okay, you're good.
Okay. So, uh, I, this is our call. Let me do a quick roll call member of the roll call vote of members present. Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris? David, you gotta unmute. I can see you, you gotta unmute to say yes. You gotta unmute. I can't hear you.
Give it try again.
I can't, David, you gotta, at the bottom of your screen should be the mic button. Is he also caller five?
I don't know who caller five is.
Yes.
Whoever caller five is, I have to re-mute them because it's just causing verbal feedback.
Okay, Dave, one more time again.
Mr. Chair, can you ask who's typing? Because it's definitely somebody typing that has the feedback.
Right.
It, I think it's caller number five, so I've just muted them.
So Dave Harris? You gotta turn your volume up because your mic's on, but your volume is not up. We're gonna have to have your votes. Do I want to try it again? Yeah, I can't hear you, Dave. I don't know what's, what's going on with that.
Dave, if you're doing your microphone through the phone, can you call up and call, hang up and call back?
Yeah, I'll try to do that.
Now it's working.
You're good.
Now it worked.
Whatever you did, you're good. All right. Dave Harris? Here? Now he's muted.
It can't talk again.
I think he's muted us. Don McCarland is not here. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky here.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson here.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse here.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz here.
Okay. With what to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law, General law chapter 38, section 20. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order closing. I gather in one place, this meeting of the Harwich Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members, the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. So, uh, we have our roll call, uh, roll call vote of members present already. We are going to proceed to item number two, the joint public hearing, um, which we're, I am just reopening, uh, right at this point. Um, and the stormwater, this is PB 2020 dash 27, Next Grid. Daniel Server of Next Grid, Inc. And, uh, this is just being opened now and it's going to be continued to a date I'm certain. Can I get a motion on that?
Wait, 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 no, you can't yet. Um, Griffin Ryder, the town engineer who's on, he actually needs to open that part of it.
Oh, yes.
And then he, that's his part of the hearing.
Sorry, Griffin, my bad.
Hi, everyone. Um, so as Duncan mentioned, unfortunately, we're gonna open and continue the hearing. Despite our best efforts, there was a mistake that the newspaper made in advertising, um, for the hearing. So, um, I'm acting as a stormwater authority, um, under the purview of the Board of Selectmen as, as has been granted to me. And in doing so, I will be, um, serving as the, as the stormwater authority and the permitting agency through this, um, stormwater permit. Um, we will be continuing the stormwater, uh, hearing to, uh, Tuesday, January 19th at 10:00 a.m. Um, it was advertised appropriately, so we can have it at that time. Um, no additional, uh, butter notices required. Butters have been notified. If they're here tonight, they're invited to join, uh, next week at 10:00 a.m. The instructions for your logging in will be posted. Um, if they haven't already, they will be posted to the engineering website. Um, and again, it'll be very similar to this. It'll be a go-to meeting with a link and whatnot. Um, if anyone has any problems, uh, accessing those instructions, uh, please feel free to call me at the engineering office and I can provide you with, uh, instructions to log in. Um, so with that, um, I guess the stormwater hearing will be continued to, um, Thursday, January 19th at 10:00 a.m.
Very good.
Mr. Griff?
Thanks, Arthur.
So, the planning board part of the meeting, uh, can go underway, can go, uh, take its place. Um, do we have a, uh, representative here?
Yeah, hello, my name is, uh, Daniel Server. I'm the Development Director with Next Griding. Uh, also with me here is Brian Yegation. Uh, he's a civil engineer record on this project and he's with, uh, BSC Group. Um, I'm here to present, uh, a solar project, uh, it's on a 17-acre parcel, uh, 3.15 megawatt AC solar system that's off of Mill Hill Road, right at the Harwich and Chatham border. Um, this project is located on an active sand and gravel pit, uh, which sees plenty of heavy machinery, traffic, uh, every day. You know, the site's located over 1,000 feet from the nearest, uh, structure and over 1,300 feet from the nearest residential home. Uh, due to the site's seclusion and topography, uh, and the current use, uh, as well as the fact that this site is already cleared of trees, makes this an ideal site for, uh, solar facility. Um, I'm gonna quote John Ideman of the Cape Cod Commissioner to reiterate this. Said, uh, uh, "The proposed use and development is not substantially different in nature, kind or purpose than the existing outdoor industrial use and development, which has historically been undertaken on the property. And further, the proposal presents, uh, a figuratively less intense and impactful development scenario than under the existing site conditions." So, we, we have one of the most ideal solar sites that, that we have really in the state of Massachusetts and definitely on the Cape. When we're talking about the current intensity of the site, big things is not only the onsite use of heavy industrial equipment, but also vehicle trips that are currently traveling to the site, um, every day. Um, the, the owner of the sand and gravel pit has estimated 40 vehicle trips a day, six days a week, which, uh, totals over 12,400 vehicle trips a year. Um, under the proposed solar use, we're planning on reducing that to an average of four per year. So, greatly reducing any impact on, on the surrounding streets, property, and the greater, you know, highways of, of, uh, the Cape. We're doing this, the solar development, which I'll get into the specifics of in a second. You know, so no new, uh, nitrogens in the grounds, no new traffic, no impact on local schools, no impact on police. Um, it's, it's really a virtually very low impact, uh, development. So, let me talk about the solar itself. Uh, we're planning 10,200 solar fixed to steel fixed tilt racking. Uh, that racking will be, uh, or the, sorry, the panels will be connected into a single central inverter. And there'll be a DC coupled battery storage system. Uh, all the major equipment will be pad mounted on concrete. So, the site itself, uh, is set in a sand and gravel pit, so it has essentially walls on, on all sides that shield it from the public view. But in addition to the, the topography of the site, um, to the west of the site, we have 1,200 feet of wooded buffer. To the north, we have 1,500 feet of wooded buffer. To the south, we have 3,000 feet of wooded buffer. And to the east, there's some additional cleared ground, uh, that is used for a similar purpose. And, uh, then the nearest right of way is 1,200 feet away. The site is virtually invisible. Um, the solar panels are only going to sit, uh, at about nine feet. So, uh, the trees surrounding this are, you know, in the 40 to 60 foot range. So, we're talking about, uh, zero impact again. And this site, um, will only be cutting 0.13 acres of trees in most, and that's just due to the civil work that we need to perform on site. So, you know, very minimum site impact. You know, the site will be fenced, uh, with galvanized fence and secure. We'll have 24-hour remote monitoring, uh, to catch any issues and problems. There'll be Knox Box outside of the fence for the fire department. It's already reviews the site. There'll be a few small concrete, well, relatively small compared to the project size, uh, concrete pads. Rest of the site is gonna be, uh, pervious material, so free flow water. Native grasses could increase the quality of groundwater. So, just to reiterate, uh, reiterate, we are replacing a active sand and gravel pit with 12,400 vehicle trips a year with a low-impact solar development that will be virtually invisible and silent for residents, uh, of, of Harwich and neighboring Chatham, in fact. So, it's a wonderfully low-impact site. And then we have Brian Yegation here from BSC Group. Um, if you guys would like him to go through, uh, staff comments, um, or have any specific technical civil questions, he's here to answer those. And I'm also here to answer any questions I have about anything. So, um, I'll just hand it back to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Server. Um, Charlene, did you, could we get some staff comments on this, please?
Absolutely. Um, so because this is accessed, um, completely through the town of Chatham, so you're gonna see kind of my profile, my camera's over there, but my big screen is here, so apologies for that. Uh, we, because the access for this is entirely through Chatham, we did notify Chatham and asked them for any comments. And, um, they had none. And within here in Harwich, fire and police had no issues. The DPW, um, they just made us aware that the DPW does do business with Mr. Clark and he's currently doing brush grinding for the DPW under a contract signed. This is back in October. Um, and additionally, Chris Nickerson, who was one of our foremen, is also related to him. Uh, so any comments did come directly from Lincoln Hooper, the director. Both he and Chris felt that there's no nexus between his application and the sand pit. In fact, uh, Lincoln always thought the sand pit actually was in Chatham. So, he had no issues. As far as conservation, there is a wetland along the southerly boundary. This wetland is also a certified vernal pool. How was the edge of wetland determined? And is the wetland, I'm not gonna go into too much. The applicant has, uh, has been in touch with Congress, uh, with conservation and has made the necessarily filings with conservation. And health, uh, the senior health agent reviewed the application for the small variants to install. I won't go into, to great detail there. The applicant has been in touch with the Board of Health. Uh, there is a requirement that the impervious surfaces cannot cover more than 15%. Uh, I have recommended that both conservation and health, uh, issues be a condition of approval. Um, and, oh, Chatham Fire had no issues with regard to myself. The town engineer and I have spent a lot of time reviewing this, uh, and we did want to make it perfectly clear that we are not opposed to this project. In fact, quite, in fact, quite the opposite. Um, I think that, uh, Dan Server said it pretty clearly. Uh, if ever there was an ideal site for a solar farm, this really is it. And my, we do have several recommendations. Oh, just another, the use was approved by the zoning board of appeals. Uh, it did need a use variances, variance, and that was approved under case number 2020 dash 34. And, uh, staff does recommend the following conditions if the board were to consider approval of the site plan. First is that Board of Health regulations inquire requirements shall be met. The next is approval is subject to the stormwater permit under the comprehensive stormwater and illicit discharge regulation approved by the town engineer. Uh, the third is the use of the large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic array was approved by a use variance issued by the zoning board of appeals pursuant to case number 2020 dash 34. The fourth is this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. And finally, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to section 40 dash 18G inspections, uh, certificate of completion and an as-belt of the Code of Harwich shall be met. And that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to the board now. If there are any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Craig.
Hi, Craig.
Hi there. How will the, um, the land under the array be maintained? Um, I imagine it's gonna be sand to start with, but possibly brasses and weeds and so forth growing up. Is there a plan for, you know, twice a year mowing or whatever the requirement is? Just how will that be maintained? Are any plans to be used in the maintenance of the sand?
Sure, so we, we do plan at one annual mowing, um, of, of the grasses that grow. We, we will plant beach grasses or native grasses that should, um, hold in, in, in an area like this. And then, like I said, we have a remote monitoring. So, uh, when, if weeds get to a height where they're casting really any shadow on the bottom of the panels, we'll send a crew out because obviously we'll know right away because we'll be losing, you know, money. And, uh, so the plan is once a year plus.
And no use of chemicals, just regular mowing with a lawnmower?
Correct, we don't use, uh, chemicals for, for, uh, pesticides.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else on the board care to make, uh, comments or questions?
We do have a new caller on. Is there a caller on, please? Is Mr. McCarland on? Okay, whoever caller number eight is, I am going to mute you.
Duncan, this is.
Charlene, this is, this is Dave, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Loud and clear, Dave, thank you. Mary, I think you wanted to, you have something?
I just, or one question through you to, uh, Charlene. Charlene, is there any, um, reason that we can't close our portion of the public hearing and act tonight?
You absolutely can close the public hearing tonight if you are comfortable. Um, uh, Griffin did touch base with town council, who indicated that yes, we can move, the planning board can move forward. Um, and that Griffin can hold his hearing next week. Keeping in mind that if there are any corrections or changes to stormwater, that will be, that will be contained solely under, uh, Griffin's review and approval through the stormwater permit. So, yes, you can move forward.
And would there be, would there be any reason, um, that we would have to, uh, revise a special permit if it's granted tonight, um, based on the stormwater, based on Griffin's stormwater review?
If I might through you, Mr. Chairman, I do not believe so based on the proposed condition that approval is subject to the local stormwater permit under the comprehensive stormwater and illicit discharge, blah, 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 blah. So, we feel, we feel comfortable that that would capture that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from Mr. Yegation from the board? It was a great, uh, set of documents. Uh, anybody, is this, um, the?
It is a public hearing, so you would need to open it for public comment.
Make sure, is there anybody in the public that wanted to make a comment here? Please announce yourself and, and your location and your address. This is gonna cut and dry here. So, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move the, that we move to close the public hearing for the planning board portion.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Uh, let's do a roll call vote. Duncan Berry, aye. Mr. Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris?
Dave Harris, aye.
Mr. McCarland? Not here. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mr. Arthur Rouse? I thought Arthur was here. Maybe he dropped off.
His initials are gone.
Okay, um, Bill Stoltz?
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the following waivers on this application. One, the waiver from provisions of section 400 dash 16B of the Code of the Town of Harwich and in the alternative to allow a plan to follow requirements of chapter 325, article 23, large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays, section 325 dash 140, large-scale solar review. Two, waiver from the provision of section 325 dash 140B to be with respect to the boundary survey prepared by, uh, a registered land surveyor as the facility is located over 500 feet from the nearest property line to the west, uh, per the town GIS. And three, a waiver from section 325 dash 140B 3H as 400 to dash 18 review procedure was followed.
Do I have a second?
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to adopt the following proposed findings for the site plan special permit. One, the parcel, the parcel is located within the RR zoning district and the WR overlay district. Two, the use was authorized through a variance from the zoning board of appeals in case number 2020 dash 34. Three, the only access will be from Chatham over Mill Hill Road. No new roads are proposed. Four, the nearest home is over 800 feet away and would not be affected by the proposal. Five, the previous use of the property was that of a sand and earth removal pit. And six, the use will not cause harm or nuisance and will not derogate from the purpose and intent of the zoning code of the town of Harwich.
Do I have a second?
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Vote, Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson? Was here, wasn't he?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is Arthur Rouse. I, I just got back on.
Okay, great, you're on caller number nine then, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote on the site plan review special permit and approve with conditions and waivers case number PB 2020 dash 27, Next Grid, Inc., for a site plan review special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section 325 dash 55, in conjunction with section 325, article 23, to establish a large-scale photovoltaic array at the property located at Zero Depot Road, map 64, parcel S dash 1, in the R dash R zoning districts. Uh, the decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich. Following conditions are imposed. One, work health regulations and requirements shall be met. Two, approval is subject to the comprehensive stormwater and illicit discharge regulation permit approved and authorized by the town engineer. Three, the use of the large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic array was approved by a use variance issued by the zoning board of appeals pursuant to case number 2020 dash 34. Four, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Five, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to section 400 dash 18 dot G inspection, certificate of completion and as-built plan of the Code of the Town of Harwich shall be met.
Do I have a second?
David Harris, second.
Uh, let's do a vote. Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz? Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys. It was, it was easy, it was a pleasure. And, uh, look forward to working in Harwich.
Appreciate you, everyone.
Thank you.
Attention on this.
Thank you to the board.
Good night, gentlemen.
So, next item is a section three public hearing. We are going to reopen PB 2024, 195 Queen Anne Road LLC. Uh, this is a reopening public hearing of 2024, continued, uh, the first of December, 2021. Continue with for March 9th of 2021.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the public hearing for PB 2020 dash 24, 195 Queen Anne Road LLC to March 9th, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 p.m.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick, I got your second. Take a vote, Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
And Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you. The next item is PB 2020 dash 28, Cape Cod Oil Company. Again, this is a reopening of the public hearing for PB 2020 dash 28. I'm sure it's continued from the same date, first of December, 2020. The applicant has requested a further containment to February 23rd, 2021.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the public hearing for PB 2020 dash 28, Cape Cod Oil Company to Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 p.m.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. The vote will be Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Thank you. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you. That takes us to item PB 2020 dash 31, 7-Eleven Main Street LLC. Uh, this again is a reopening of a, uh, the hearing for PB 2020 dash 31, continued from September 17th of 2020. Uh, with the meeting now open again, reopened, I'd like to call the applicant to make a presentation. If I may? Who we have here from 7-Eleven LLC?
So, that's me. Uh, good evening, everyone. This is Oma Patel. So, we applied for adding a generator in the rear of the building and, uh, reducing one of the parking spaces. And, uh, we still have, um, 23 parking spaces, uh, which are required, uh, according to our usage and the square footage of, uh, retail, um, and the apartments upstairs. So, we're looking for an approval to. So we're looking for an approval to install a generator in the rear of the building, covering it by a stockade fence to reduce the noise and also make it less physically viewable from the street side.
Very good. May I have your report?
Yes, you may. No town department had any questions or comments. Planning staff comments, including engineer, in discussion with the town engineer, we both agree that this was an appropriate location for the generator. This was a difficult parking space to maneuver in the first place. So there are no concerns with the generator to be located in this former parking space. The initial site plan approval provided for two extra parking spaces. So the elimination of one space should in no way impact the property or the use of the property. All conditions imposed pursuant to PB 2019-18 decision should continue and can easily made a condition of this approval. And since the staff report was sent, we did receive two letters of correspondence from a Butters. And I do have those. And I know Mr. Antonellis is also on, and he was one of those who submitted a letter. So I don't know if you want me to read the letters?
Sure. Are they lengthy? I'll leave that to your discretion, Shirley.
There are a few paragraphs each.
Okay.
They won't take too long. We're getting a lot of feedback. So if you're not talking, unless you're on the phone, I know Bill and Arthur, it's sometimes difficult. If people can mute, that would be awesome. And Craig, I think you're the culprit once again. I don't know. I don't know what it is. Now that you've muted, it's fine. So the first letter is from Robert and Lynn Stern. Dear Ms. Banta, who Elaine Banta is my assistant. My name is Robert Stern. My wife Lynn and I and myself are the new owners as of 10/23/20 of 98 Parallel Street, Unit 1. We are very happy to be part of Harwich community and the Harwich Historic District in particular. We have received notices as close to Butters to the convenience store development that faces our home for the upcoming meeting. We appreciate the care and design of the property and look forward to its completion. I have included a letter from our neighbor Peter Antonellis and Susan Sater, who also are Butters by way of reference, and that we fully support their concern as it affects us as well. The two issues that are most, that are of most concern to us are the screening issue and potential noise with the installation of a generator that is proposed. We do appreciate the work Mr. Patel has done to separate this property from ours. We had hoped for more dense and higher screening perenn with fencing and/or more mature tree planting on perenn. I would expect quite a bit of traffic for delivery trucks, tenants, and customers throughout the day, including early deliveries. Thus, more efficient screening is important for privacy and quality of life. We do hope the planning board will condition approval by addressing the screening needs described. The installation of the generator is a second concern. It appears that it will be enclosed behind fencing similar to the trash receptacle area. I'm no expert in generators, but we would want to know that the noise generated and when it would need to run at acceptable levels and meet the noise regulation acceptable to Harwich. Perhaps Mr. Patel has already addressed this. We feel this is a reasonable request for us as well as our neighbors. Please let us know if you have any questions or need further information or input from us. Again, we're happy to be part of the Harwich community and for the opportunity to express our concerns for the upcoming meeting. Respectfully submitted, Robert and Lynn Stern. And then Peter, do you want me to read your letter? Or do you want to?
Go right ahead, Shirley. That's fine.
Okay, I'll go ahead. This is from Peter Antonellis and Susan Sater. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Dear Chair and members of the planning board, we live at 100 Parallel Street, directly behind and south of 7-Eleven Main Street as a Butters. We appreciate this opportunity to again join with the planning board and the developer, Mr. Patel, to work towards the development of a convenience store in the Harwich Center Historic District in the interest of and for the benefit of the wider Harwich community. Regarding the request now before the planning board, we gladly support Mr. Patel's proposal to remove a particular parking space in his parking lot to accommodate a power generator, provided that the planning board condition with such approval upon Mr. Patel's first extending along, upon Mr. Patel's first extending along the entire southern perimeter of the parking lot, a stockade fence like the one he already erected to enclose his dumpster. Though likely well-intentioned, his landscaping does not screen his parking lot from our property at all, including the glare of headlights that shine directly into our home. And he did send photos, and I believe we provided those to you all. The earliest meeting we had with Mr. Patel and his representative, Attorney Kahoon, addressed our concerns about nuisance, and we all agreed that Mr. Patel's plan should include this plant, his planting Leyland Cypress between our property and the parking lot. In addition to our own newest plantings, we reasonably expected that Mr. Patel's agreement and his planting meant the parking would be effectively screened from our residential lot. However, the trees he planted do not reach above the height of the retaining wall on which the parking lot sits. The trees do not at all block our view of vehicles and their headlights, and obviously will not for many years to come. Given that we can anticipate a steady stream of cars and trucks going into and out of the parking lot from early in the morning until late at night, seven days a week, we ask the planning board, please condition any approval Mr. Patel now seeks upon his first installing the stockade fencing. We are amenable to considering alternatives so long as our screening concerns are resolved before the board takes any further actions with respect to Mr. Patel's site. Respectfully, Susan Sater and Peter Antonellis. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
I was muted myself there. Sorry. Thank you very much, Shirley. Let's open up to the board for comments.
This is Dave Harris. I have a comment, a question ready for Mr. Patel. How often will you need to test-run this generator? Monthly or is it another schedule?
So it automatically tests itself every about two weeks, and it runs for 15 minutes approximate, and then starts running on song. So it's every two weeks for 15 minutes.
Can you set the time of day that that runs?
Yes, we can.
I think you should check with the Butters and see what time of day they would prefer.
Anybody else on the board?
Mr. Chair?
Hi, Ms. Maslowsky?
So just for you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Patel, are you, would you consider putting up a fence to screen the parking lot for the Butters?
So we like previously, you know, discussed about putting up the Leyland Cypress. And I ordered, you know, the tallest one that we can order, and they're at least like seven feet in height. And they grow about like four feet on average per year. So they will grow like pretty tall and not like too long, but probably like, if it grows on the four feet, then it's definitely going to cover the parking lot, and it's going to screen widening the headlights of the cars coming in. But we feel like if we give it a little bit more time, then it's going to grow to a point where it's going to be covering the parking lot. And that was the whole purpose of putting these many Leyland Cypress at that location, which was recommended by our neighbors. So that's what we have done.
So when did those get planted?
We planted that probably like four weeks ago.
Okay, so they've just been planted?
Yes, but we ordered the tallest one that we can find. And the, on average, the shortest one is seven feet in height.
Okay.
This is David Harris to the Chair. To Mr. Patel, what is the spacing of the Leyland Cypress?
I'm sorry?
The spacing?
What is the spacing of the?
The spacing between, if we look at the stems, then it's probably, say, five or six feet?
All right, thank you.
They're not properly socially distanced. Chairman, Craig, have a question? Mr. Chadwick?
Thank you. Mr. Patel, is it possible to put some other planting, shorter plantings like something that's six feet tall at the top of the retaining wall at the rear of your property? I know the Leyland Cypress that we're discussing are down at the, I would say, the ground level. And they're going to grow up behind the retaining wall. So at the top of the retaining wall where there's a little barrier of cars parked, there that are, as I said, six feet high, that would immediately shade the headlights from anybody who parks in those parking spaces from those Butters.
So the space we have over there, it's probably like, I would say, 18 or 20 inches because we have a concrete retaining wall and then we have the pavement. So if we put something, then it's, we would have to, it could be possible, but it might be difficult to, just so we can, because then we would have to plant so many to cover the entire parking spaces.
How about, again, this is Craig, a follow-up question?
Sorry, there's a lot of feedback there.
I have a follow-up question, if that's okay? Thank you. Mr. Patel, what about the possibility of a small stockade-type fence, four, five, six feet in height on the back top of the retaining wall along the back of the property that would shield the lights from the Butters?
So we were thinking, instead of putting it on top of the retaining wall, what if we put the fence at the property line? Then the neighbors will not have to see the retaining wall or the parking spaces, and they might, you know, get at most privacy that they are looking for. I think that that could be the best solution because putting the fence at the top, it might serve the purpose of like blocking parking spaces, but they might be still looking at the retaining wall. So if we put the fence right on the property line, then they won't even be looking at the retaining wall. So I think if neighbors are okay, Mr. Antonellis is okay with that. We can put the stockade fence right on the property line. That way, that solves both of the problems.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Antonellis?
If I may, thank you. We're amenable to that idea that Mr. Patel has now broached. Certainly, the stockade fence along our property line with his property would provide the obstruction of the screening that I think is required according to the bylaw. The earlier recommendation by Chadwick was sent to us, and we had thought about this, my wife and I. But in fact, the fence that Patel recommends on the property line was perhaps the best solution. I would like to point out one other fact. If you look at the pictures that we submitted along with our letter, clearly the trees are beneath the level of the retaining wall. So all of the parking that happens is above that. And while Mr. Patel is correct in this regard, the Cypress trees do grow very quickly. There would be no significant growth. They would have to grow four to five feet easily just to be at the height of the current guardrail, if you will, that is above on the parking lot. And any car that's up there, certainly all the pickup trucks and trucks are well higher than the guardrail. So those trees wouldn't really obstruct those lights in that activity. Mr. Patel is right. Putting a stockade fence on our property line probably is the best solution from our standpoint. I don't know if that meets my neighbors' concerns. We don't entirely share the same property line as they do with Mr. Patel's property. But for our purposes, it would be satisfactory with respect to the provision of a screen. I have additional question or two about the generator. I guess if you want me to ask those at this point. My question about the generator, sir, is are there certain requirements about what the magnitude of power that is needed for such a generator to maintain safety or to maintain the coldness of your refrigeration once you lose electricity? I'm just curious as to how you settle on a particular generator in this instance. Can I direct that question to the Chair or to Mr. Patel?
Well, having just gone through it myself, I can tell you that you have to get a contractor who is able to get the proper permitting. I think it's a kind of a math equation about square footage, the volume of the house, or the volume of the cubic volume and the draw on the pipe from the street, blah, blah. It's
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for that.
Standard formula. And I think there are thresholds that, you know, you have to have a certain kind of kilowatt for certain sizes. You know, they want to make sure that you're not drawing too much. I mean, Mr. Patel, you've probably gone through this. You know it better than I do. But I just had it like about a month ago, so.
So if I can respond to that briefly. So my concern is, if there's a formula to do this, the question is, how much noise does the minimum generator put out? And how does that bear with the Harwich code with respect to noise or noise pollution? I just, those aren't things I'm familiar with, and I'm just curious whether Mr. Patel has already checked into that.
So we have shown the specifications of the generator to the, I think, to the building department. And they have approved that this is like not too noisy. I don't know the correct terms, but it's, it doesn't create too much noise. And this is only to be used when there's like, you know, power outage, there's snowstorms. And the testing we're going to be doing is just going to be very brief. And we can set, we're going to set the time in the daytime so then we are not disturbing anybody's sleep or anybody's neighbor's privacy. And we are putting up the fence to reduce even the noise more.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, so I don't think it's going to be that loud that you would be complaining because the building department has already looked at the specifications, and they think it's a fit for the location.
Mr. Chairman, we've said in our, in some of the draft correspondence that I think we had with Mr. Patel, or maybe it didn't make it to him. But we're gladly to support the need. We understand the need for a generator. Concern about noise, sounds like he's probably addressed that already. Sounds like he also wants to work with the neighbors to make sure that the schedule for that 15 minutes twice a month isn't at an hour that's disturbing. So we appreciate that. First and foremost, however, we're glad to hear about his solution for the screening. They want to put the fence up on the property line or as close to the property line as it can. That's fine with us. We have this one little concern about the fence. I think Mr. Patel knows that the property line is on a bit of an embankment, and land drops off immediately after the property line. So as close to the property line as possible, what's needed. If it's four feet away from our property line, it'll be four feet. If it's if it's four feet away from our property line, it'll be four feet lower in height. And if you're putting up a six or an eight foot fence, you know, we don't want to lose height on that. So that's our, I guess that's a remaining concern. I don't have anything more to add. But you've done that, that's that's fine. We don't have any objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as Craig? Thank you. As a follow up to that, I had this thought, Mr. Antonellis, and I wondered how high, let me rephrase that, the grade of the parking lot is so much higher than, I assume, the grade of the foundation of your homes on Parallel Street. So where the the grade of the parking lot, if you drew a line out to Parallel Street, where that comes in your house, does it come to the second floor? Does it come to the third floor, the basement, so on and so forth? So are we going to require Mr. Patel's injunction of a fence at the property? I think a great one, but is it going to require this to be twelve feet high? To block the headlights of the vehicles in the parking lot at that higher grade?
I I really did not anticipate anything beyond an eight foot fence. Our house, our second floor is, first of all, let me start. The grade at the street level upon which one enters the parking lot is probably about six feet taller than our than our foundation. So anything coming in off Main Street into the parking lot, we're going to see unless there's a substantial fence or screen at our property line. We don't, I mean, we have trees behind our house that are old and tall, very mature, and they provide some screening in the summer to to even see the lot. The tall trees, we don't expect it. We can't expect, we're got to have a fence, an eight foot fence at the at the property line with the idea that it's also maintained by the property owner who owns the fence so that it, you know, doesn't fall into disrepair and sit there for another six months or something. That's obviously not going to be providing screening. But to answer your question, there is a significant grade difference between what's happening on our first floor or where the Main Street is in relation to our first floor or our second floor. We don't expect anything to shield us on the second floor. It just would be impossible, I think, until those Leland Cypress grow. Those grow to thirty feet. I've got several of them in my yard, and they're thirty feet. So, you know, if there when there's a thirty foot tree growing over there at the base of the retaining wall, that's going to provide us with the screening on the second floor here. That's my view of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Mary.
Yes, Mary.
I throw you to Charlene. Charlene, any, as I know Mr. Patel knows, and I know Mr. Antonellis knows, any fence that's put on that property is going to require historic HDHC review and approval for a certificate of appropriateness for the location in the historic district. If we put a condition on the on the approval that the applicant would install a fence that meets with HDHC approval, can we avoid them having to come back if, depending on what HDHC decides?
Sure you, Mr. Chairman, Mary, I believe, yes, absolutely, you could.
Okay.
Nice. Do you have a rough idea what that language might be for a condition?
Yes.
Now, okay, great. Any further comments from the board? Any public comments? So I think we've probably covered so far what we need unless there are any comments, I'd like to let the board tell me how we'd like to proceed here. What are your wishes?
And Mary, I think we're getting a lot of feedback from you for some reason.
I was saying, Mr. Chair. Are you looking for a motion at this point? Mary, you want to?
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Alan Peterson, second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick? You have the?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Thank you, David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky.
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Okay, so.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to adopt the following proposed findings of fact. One, that the property is located within the CB and Howard Center overlay districts. That, two, the reduction of one parking space will not impact the site or the uses on the property. Three, all conditions and provisions of the Planning Board 2019-18 Site Plan Special Permit shall continue to be observed and enforced. Four, the modification to this site as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Five, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. Six, there will be no nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians. Seven, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Your roll call Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve with conditions and waivers case number PB 2020-31 711 Main Street LLC, a modification of the PB 2019-18 Site Plan Review Special Permit to reduce the number of existing parking spaces by one to accommodate the installation of an enclosed mechanical energy appliance generator at the rear of the building for the property located at 711 Main Street, map forty one parcel D eight. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section three twenty five dash fifty five, and the decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application needs the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich and the following conditions. A, all conditions and provisions of the Planning Board decision PB 2019-18 Site Plan Special Permit shall continue to be observed and enforced and shall continue to run with this decision. B, this decision shall be reported at the Barstool County Registry of Deeds. C, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to 400-18.g. Inspection, certificate of completion, and as built plan of the Code of the Town of Harwich shall be met. And D, that the applicant shall install a fence as close to and along the property line with the butters to the rear of the property at 711 Main Street, such that the fence will require, such that the fence to be installed will be approved by the Harwich Historic District and Historical Commission.
Go have a second?
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
And Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Antonellis.
Mr. Chairman, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you.
Okay, so. We are now at. Just my left close here accordingly. We are at PB 2020-26. Which is a reopening of the public hearing of PB 2026 Royal Apartments LLC, which was continued continued from December seventeen. I would like at this time to request the applicant to make a presentation. And let's start with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zender?
How are you, how are you tonight?
It's fine, Dan, standing, thank you.
And I extend the greeting to everybody on the board. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Ben Zender, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me is the applicant's representative, Alex Barton, and also our project engineer, Dave Mcnevich, is here to answer any questions, hopefully the questions that come up in the process. And before we get going, Mr. McCallum, I'm not sure which members are on the line. Do you mind if I just, you mind just going through so I can check out who's here and present in hearing this matter?
Sure. We have me, I'm the, it's not Mr. McCallum, my name is Duncan Berry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Berry.
We have Mr. Chadwick, Harris, Peterson, Rouse, and Stoltz, and Mrs. Mary Maslowsky.
Thank you all. Again, my name is Ben Zender, and I'm here, and this is our first substantive hearing of this matter by the board on this application. We were actually before the board almost a year ago in January twenty eight to hear a variation of this project. And as the board members may recall, at that time, your zoning bylaw required or contained certain density limitations for construction multifamily dwellings in the in the MRL District. Since and as a part of that process, we made a presentation to your board. The board had some ideas, some very good input into the process. You suspended your your hearing of the matter so that we could go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance from the lot area requirements and the density requirements. We were unable to secure that variance. We ended up withdrawing that application and coming back before your board and withdrawing application to you. After that, your board advanced an amendment to your zoning bylaw to to change the requirements for multifamily dwellings in the town. That was passed at a town meeting, and following that passage, we reapplied with essentially the same project with some some minor variations. So this project is to convert the former Royal Assisted Living Facility, which is now is not being used in that fashion, to a multifamily dwelling. As the members are aware, multifamily dwellings are permitted by a special permit in the MRL District, and your bylaw has certain requirements for your considering and hearing these applications. What we're presenting, and we're also required, because it's a change of use or a new commercial activity in the town, we're required to have a site plan review remediation by this board. Finally, in addition to the special permit and the site plan review special permit, because this is in the Harwich Center Overlay District, and we're looking to vary some of the requirements for lot coverage and parking setback requirements, we have applied for a Harwich Center Overlay permit as well. So you're actually hearing three permit applications at the same time. This application is to make almost no changes to the structures themselves that are located on the property, but to refit the interior of the property and to create site changes to provide the adequate number of parking spaces and screening on the site. What we're proposing is twenty six units, which would be fourteen studio units, eight one bedroom units and four two bedroom units. And we've submitted architectural plans from David H. Dunlap Associates to to show the board on the interior layout of the property. And also, the board will note that on the architectural plans themselves, there's a certification from the architect that the habitable rooms have no less than one hundred twenty square feet of floor area and no major dimensions of less than ten feet, because that's one of the requirements for for the location of units in multifamily dwellings in Harlem. Just to kind of address one item right off, this is not what we would call capital A affordable housing. This is what I would characterize as small A affordable housing. It provides twenty six units of market rate, market rate rental apartments, which is a badly needed commodity. You know, it slots in above large A affordable housing projects that are subsidized by the federal government or the state government or the or the town of Harwich, and and slides in below, you know, higher rental units in the town of Harwich, which are really not affordable for for many people in the town, including working families, town employees, older citizens, single people, elderly people. So we believe this provides a much needed resource at no cost to the town by way of either tax breaks, state or federal grant monies, CPA funds. You know, there's no expenditure by the town. So this will be, we believe, a great project for the town in terms of providing that housing. However, in my conversations leading up to this to the hearing of this application, I've reached out to stakeholders in the town to try to understand the concerns of of various both boards and individuals in the town. And one of the concerns that we heard was that this project is not providing any type of restricted affordable housing for the for the town. And so I've been authorized by my client to offer that we would, if this board were to see fit to grant the permit really that's required, that we would, we would love to have a condition on the permit grant that would require that three units be dedicated to what we call income restricted affordability, meaning they would be set aside for for those individuals in the town that meet the income requirements for affordable housing. And although I don't know exactly what the form of that would look like, we would certainly, if there were such a condition, we would work with your town council and your town planner and possibly your town administrator to develop the form of that restriction that would be put in place prior to the issuance of a building permit for for construction or for refilling of these units. That's an overview of the project for the board. You know, I'd like to, if the if the Chair doesn't mind, I'd like to leave the overview there and address questions as they come up rather than go through all the details. If at some point the board wants me to address each of the specific criteria for multifamily dwellings in the MRL District or the special permit grant criteria or the site point of view criteria, I'm happy to do that. But but at this point, I'd like to rest, if the board doesn't mind, and just address any questions that come up. And thank you all for hearing us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Zender. I'd like to hear from the town interim town planner, Ms. Queen Health.
Thank you. I swallowed water wrong, so if I cough, that's what it is. I don't have anything bad. There are six waivers that the applicant has requested. One is the filing fee when they were before the board. Last year, the board did grant them a waiver of a filing fee. They did, because they asked for an additional special permit, they did submit an additional five hundred and twenty five dollar fee. They asked for a waiver from variance notations on the plan. Copies of variance and special permits have been provided in the application packet. There are many different times that this has gone before the planning board and zoning board this property. They did ask for a waiver of the existing driveways within a hundred feet. Their argument or their their reasoning, the site plan shows existing driveways across Parallel Street from the locus, showing driveways within a hundred feet shall require significant increase in the scale of the plan, and there is no proposed increase in traffic. Four, they've asked for a waiver from lighting. The applicant requests a waiver. Other requirements show lighting on the building, existing building, as there's no changes proposed. Five is freestanding signs. The applicant has not determined the location, and signage will conform with all signage requirements of the sign bylaw. And six, parking area setback requirement. The applicant requests that the planning board waive parking setback requirements set forth in section three twenty five forty two L pursuant to the board's right to waive such setbacks as set forth in the bylaw, section three twenty five fifty one oh five F. Moving along, comments from other boards and committees in town. Health, the senior health agent reviewed the application for approval of the multifamily use special permit at the Harwich Center Overlay, in the Harwich Center Overlay District, and a site plan review special permit at three twenty eight Bank Street. The septic system was originally designed for thirty one assisted living rooms plus additional office space for a total of four thousand seven hundred and seventy three gallons per day. The proposed floor plan shows that thirty three bedrooms are proposed with a total flow of three thousand six hundred and thirty gallons per day. As the plan is proposed, the health department has no concerns. However, we do require that a passing Title V inspection be submitted prior to any building permit approval. The fire chief has no issues for the planning board from a fire perspective. The police chief, the fire, the deputy chief had a traffic officer look at the plans. Here are Officer Holmes' comments after meeting with one of the abutters in the neighborhood, Carla Burke. This is via email, December 2020. "I had a nice conversation with Carla and explained where our input comes from as far as looking at past crashes and traffic complaints. She was happy I listened to her voice and concerns. After talking with her, I did recognize one problem. The height and/or location of the current fence along Bank Street limits the sight line looking south. Could we have a planning, could we have planning recommend the fence be removed and/or reduced in height to meet the provision of the bulk height by law? They have no other concerns. This certainly could be made a condition if the board saw it fit." DPW Highway has no concerns. "Conservation, as proposed, all work is outside the 100-foot buffer zone. Erosion control shall be installed at the 100-foot line to ensure work stays out of the conservation jurisdiction. Permits required if work, permits will be required if work will enter conservation jurisdiction so long as new activity is happening in the 100-foot buffer. Conservation has no jurisdiction." Engineering, the town engineer reviewed the plans with the town planner, and the comments are noted below. Additionally, he did review in detail a stormwater report. So planning comments, as noted, the town engineer and town planner met and reviewed the plans. An application is submitted originally back on October 23, 2020. We had four items, which they have at this time addressed fully in the most recent revised plans and other clarifications. Two, the board has historically granted waivers from all setbacks within the overlay district. The requested waivers are reasonable. Three, at this time, the planning requirements of the bylaw do appear to have been met. Five, as of January 5, 2021, 16 letters, emails, and those were attached, have been received from the abutter and a legal representative of a butter. We do note that two letters, the same letters were received from both Mangillo and Menzie. Those duplicates, only one of each were included. We do believe that reasonable conditions are recommended and would include the following. A, erosion control shall be installed to maintain during construction of the 100-foot conservation buffer line to ensure work stay out of the conservation jurisdiction. Permits from conservation shall be required if work enters conservation jurisdiction. B, a passing Title V inspection be submitted to the health department prior to any building permit approval. C, all signage shall comply with the sign code, historic district, and historical commission and building department requirements. D, all lighting shall comply with the lighting code and historic district and historical commission requirements. E, appropriate approval from the historic district and historic commission shall be required. F, any changes to approved site plan may require additional review and approval from the planning board and the historic district historic commission. G, the decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deed. H, conformance with all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to Section 400-18G. Inspection, certificate of completion, and as-built plan of the code of Harwich shall be met. Additionally, if the board didn't want to impose a condition relative to the height of the fence, certainly that is something they could also impose. At this time, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green-Halg. So we do have on file 10 letters of opposition, three letters from an attorney for an abutter, and one letter of support on record. And thanks to Elaine Banter and the planning department. We have a synopsis of this. So in lieu of reading all these into the record, they are part of the official record, I would like to review very quickly an overview or a synopsis of what they say. Now, in doing so, I don't want to, you know, cut off any discussion. I'm only doing this so that if there's something new to state, that would be acceptable. However, we don't want to turn this into an opportunity to restate what is already on the record. So very quickly, we have opposition letters from Carla Burke, Reverend Marshall West, Evelyn and David Toby, Diane and John Rikash. I hope, Rikash, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it properly. I'm sure I'll get corrected. Kip and Stephanie O'Neill, and the board of directors from the Mid-Cape Church Homes, Ken Britwell, Jean and Raymond Montillo, Marla Menzies, and Attorney David Reed. Now, it looks, the way it breaks down is that there are density issues that eight of the correspondents referred to. There's a serious hazard or nuisance for vehicles and pedestrians that are brought up. There are five references to this issue. Environmental concerns about wetlands and septic, there are five references to that. We also noted lack of sidewalk and parking issues, three references. The absence of onsite management, there are two references. There's a general ecological reference and noise and light pollution reference. There's a comment having to do with the, being an unsuitable location for affordable housing. There's a reference to zoning relief being required, as well as a reference to, this is not planning board jurisdiction for parking setback. The one proponent letter was from Arthur Boden, who considers it suitable and best use for keeping it residential and general enthusiasm for the idea of revitalizing the center. Now, I have a overview of each of these letters. And again, all are on file. I would like to ask right now if there are any members, for the, any board members that would like to make a comment about what we have on the record, what interim town planner has said, and what Mr. Zender has said. I'd like to open that again to the board. I can't hear you. No comments? Well, then I think I would like to see if there are any further comments from Mr. Zender from what we've heard on the letters very quickly or from the public. Mr. Brophy, I recognize.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Larry Brophy. I live at 16 Ridge Road in Harwich, Massachusetts. I am by education and experience a town planner. I was on the Harwich Planning Board for an excess of 10 years, a number of which owed to chairman. I speak tonight as a member of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust, and a resident of Harwich. I'm not going to go into specific technical zoning questions, nor setbacks, nor lighting, or whatever have you. However, what I'd like to talk about is the dire need of the type of, of this type of housing in Harwich. And I'd like to talk about how we can go forward. A number of years ago, I left the planning board, and since that time, I've been active as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. The housing now that is proposed is best, from our point of view, the Affordable Housing Trust has been very, very slow. However, we are poised to create some affordable housing in Harwich, and the need is very critical. However, during the pandemic, I realized the problems that we faced, and anything that we can do is a really good thing to do. Therefore, my proposal to you at this point in time, and I'd like to be very brief, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate you listening to me. But we breathe a little, this proposal breathes a little new life into an old building. And that is something that we do very well in Cape Cod. All buildings have been repurposed many, many times. Reuse of this building will go a number, a number of groups in Harwich that really, really need housing. That is, single people, and young married couples, with perhaps some young children. This is a demographic solely in need of housing. Lordly knows that all the members of the planning board know what it's like to need housing, particularly when you reside in a real estate market such as we've been going through during this pandemic. As a result, I wholeheartedly support this proposal. Would like to add that we cannot do something that will create housing and not create affordable housing. And I really appreciate the discussion from the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Zender, Zenander. I really support his proposal, and if he could put several units of housing that are affordable and affordable to to the the way we can, we can support it for a long time through a proposal for the housing, I mean, for the housing to the registry of deeds. I would really, really appreciate him doing, making this affordable housing and do so in a way that keeps them perpetually affordable through a deed restriction. Now, as all the members of the board are well aware, the target of Harwich and their housing proposal is that they indeed make every effort to create housing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Go ahead. Am I still on?
Still on. Thank you.
Okay. And housing that creates housing that would be affordable to anybody in the Commonwealth. And the 10% housing that Attorney Zender has proposed, I think would be absolutely wonderful to the proposal. As a result, I would thoroughly, I would completely support any proposal that creates housing in Harwich. And I would, I would thoroughly say that I really don't want to go through all the statistics that I need to create and reiterate on how bad we need housing in Harwich. And if you could support the proposal, I would, I would appreciate it thoroughly. And I thank you very much for your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The floor is open to the members of the public.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reed, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board and applicants. Good to see you all this evening. I represent Greg Winston and David Plunkett, who are the owners and residents of the immediately abutting property at 109 Parallel Street that abuts the smaller of the two buildings on this site, which is number 111 Parallel. It's part of the same site. As you've indicated, you have three letters from me dated November 16th, November 18th, and January 4th. I can tell you tonight that you can disregard my letter of November 18th and portions of the first letter of November 16th, which I'm sure disappoints you because you've already spent a great deal of time reading them. But the point that we raised in middle of November was that this new bylaw, 51Q, that allows a special permit for multifamily housing, had not been approved by the Attorney General's Office prior to today. It has been approved as of today. I checked the Attorney General's website this morning, and their letter of approval is there. So that issue is now moved, and you need not address that concern. However, that does not resolve all of our concerns, and we remain opposed to this project for a number of reasons. And in light of the chair's comments about the summarization of the letters, I'm going to assume that you've all actually read and considered those letters thoroughly prior to tonight, so I can just briefly touch on the key points. I did, in each of the letters, include attachments and in some cases highlighted certain provisions for you, because this format of us being separate makes it difficult for opponents as well as applicants to present materials to you on the spot. So I perhaps went a little overboard with providing you with everything I thought you would need in advance so that we wouldn't have to worry about presenting them tonight. And I would ask you to refer to them. Our concerns, our first concern, as raised in my letter of the 16th of November, is that this application is premature in the sense that there is additional zoning relief that they have not, as far as we know, even applied for and certainly not gotten. And since under your site plan review standards, one of the things you look for is zoning compliance. Without that relief, that additional relief, they are not in compliance, and what you're asked to approve would not be in compliance with the zoning bylaw. And the first reason is that this is a considerably non-conforming building. It is non-conforming as to height, as to setbacks from the street, as to the curb cuts and proximity to the intersection, as to the habitable third floor, as to the second apartment and kitchen, on and on and on. It's greatly non-conforming. And Chapter 48, Section 6, which deals with pre-existing non-conforming structures and uses, as you know, says that when you're altering a non-conforming building in order to accommodate a substantially different use, that that alteration in change of use requires approval from the Board of Appeals, even if it's not an extension or enlargement of the building. Interior alterations in order to make a different use, even a conforming use, because the building remains not conforming, requires a special permit from the Board of Appeals.
I did not mean to call you while you were online. Sorry, I'll text you.
I'm sorry, is somebody else? Am I good, Mr. Chairman, still?
Yes, you're fine. You're good.
I'm looking again at your bylaw this afternoon. I note that it is actually more restrictive than Chapter 48, Section 6, because it says in 325-547 subpart B that the alteration of a non-conforming building, which is other than a one- and two-family structure, requires a variance in every case. It is not enough to get a special permit or a Section 6 finding, as we call it, to make an alteration for a new use of a non-conforming building. In Harwich, it also requires a variance. Second point we'd like to make is that under this new multifamily use bylaw, Section 51Q, the density permitted is keyed and capped at what the site can contain for parking as required by Article 9, the parking and loading requirements. As I've indicated in my letter, the parking setback requirement is 50 feet from all lot lines. And I would refer you to Exhibit 4 in my letter of November 16th, where I marked up the site plan to show you what I'm referring to. And by my estimation, by scaling, and I'm not an engineer, but approximately 23 of the 43 parking spaces shown are within, partially within, that 50-foot setback from each of the lot lines. That means that the site does not offer conforming parking, parking conforming to Article 9 in order to justify the 26 apartments that are proposed. That is a threshold requirement under your bylaw for the multifamily housing. Now, the applicant has an interim applied for, as Mr. Zender indicated, a special permit under the Harwich Center overlay district. And within that special permit request, has asked for additional relief in the form of a waiver of that 50-foot parking setback requirement. But I would ask you, as I did in my letter, to look carefully at Section 32551O, which is the Harwich Center overlay district, subparagraph 5, which sets forth dimensional requirements. And it sets forth in paragraph A through E, specific, more lenient requirements, dimensional requirements. requirements, dimensional requirements for multifamily developments in this zone. None of them refer to the dimensional requirements of the parking requirements in Article 9. The first says just setback requirements. But if you look at the previous section of the bylaw, it says the dimensional requirements, including building setbacks, are set forth in paragraph O5. So despite the absence of the word "building setbacks" in paragraph 5A, that's all that's referred to in the scope of this bylaw section above. So the waiver provision is in paragraph F at the end of 5. And it says you may waive or modify these dimensional requirements. Not all dimensional requirements in the bylaw, not dimensional requirements in Article 9, but only the ones that are set forth in that paragraph, A through E, none of which cover the 50-foot setback requirement for parking spaces. So it is my contention to you that you may not vary that 50-foot requirement by virtue of a waiver under the Overlay District bylaw. Now, I gather from Charlene's staff report that maybe you've done that in the past, maybe this issue hasn't come up in the past. Maybe no one has discussed the parameters of that waiver provision. But now that it has, and now that I believe that it, it is correctly interpreted to not include anything other than what's included in paragraph 5A through E, that you cannot, by virtue of that waiver, address the dimensional requirements for parking spaces, for parking areas, that's 50-foot setback requirement under Article 9. As for the merits of the special permit, should you reach it for the multifamily use, the first requirement is that you find that the use would not adversely affect the neighborhood. We contend that it will. That unlike the applicant, we do not see this as a minor change in use. This is a major change from a rather passive, benign, a retirement center use to a very active 26-unit multifamily building. Perhaps the best illustration of the degree of that change is the parking itself. The current requirement under the existing special permits is only 14 parking spaces. They now propose 43. That's an increase of 300% in the parking spaces required and proposed. Parking spaces aren't required just because we like parking spaces. They're required because the bylaw anticipates that they will be needed. So if the parking spaces have to be increased by 300%, so too will the parking demand and the traffic that goes with it. Traffic will increase by 300% at least with this change of use. Keeping in mind that when it was the retirement center, most people did not have cars. Most people did not come and go from the site on a daily basis to go to work or to the grocery store or the dump or town hall. Now, we're going to have individuals actively employed, perhaps even small families, coming and going on a regular basis, much more intensively than the people did before when it was just a retirement center. That is going to be a significant change to this neighborhood and a detrimental change to the neighborhood. Finally, let me, let me make more of an observation than anything else. You have passed, with your, your guidance, the planning board last year, this much more lenient bylaw that allows multifamily housing. You eliminated a lot of hurdles that used to exist. And it is right now a very lenient and very flexible requirement, a bylaw with such requirements. But the applicant, as they sit before you, cannot meet even those lenient threshold requirements. They can't demonstrate to you that they can qualify for the 26 units they want based upon, if nothing else, the parking demand without getting additional relief in order to qualify to ask for the special permit. And if the site can't accommodate the parking they need for the minimum threshold to ask for your special permit, then you can't honestly find that the site is suitable for the use they propose. If you need relief in even, even to get in the ballpark, then you don't qualify for the special permit. So in sum, we would suggest that you should not grant these special permits, three special permits, because they still need additional relief that they have not applied for under Chapter 48, Section 6, and by law, Section 325-24, paragraph, I mean, excuse me, 54, Paragraph 7, that they don't conform to the new Paragraph 51Q because they cannot accommodate the parking that is demanded for the intensity of use that they propose. That the Overlay District Special Permit Procedure does not permit a waiver of that parking space setback requirement because it's not covered by Paragraph 5. And that they do not qualify for the special permit because they do any of the special permits. Because they would adversely affect this neighborhood. And you have honest and sincere and well-written letters from a lot of neighbors who are seriously opposed to this, who have come back time and time and time again at all the hearings before you and all the hearings before the planning board. They feel strongly about this, strongly enough to keep showing up and impressing upon you that your job is to enforce the bylaw, and that includes in part to protect the neighborhood from inappropriate development. We would ask you to deny this application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have any comments back from the board addressing Mr. Reed in particular for the legalities and votes?
Mr. Chairman. I'll defer to Mr. Stoltz if he had questions.
Okay, Mary, did you want to say?
So I was going to throw you back to Charlene. Charlene, what was, what is your comment on Mr. Reed's statements?
I, I really have none. I think the argument that needs to be made is that of Mr. Zender's. The board has in the past, right, wrong, or indifferent, granted waivers under the provisions of the Overlay District. Historically, throughout that area, there's parking that doesn't comply with the underlying zoning. This would just be, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, consistent with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is, this depends on your mayhem. I, thank you, thank you. I'd like to rebut Attorney Reed's comments. Putting aside for a moment the question as to whether or not the project is detrimental to the neighborhood. Your bylaw, 325-42, which is the bylaw that sets forth a Section K of the 50-foot setback requirement that Attorney Reed is referring to, has a preamble. And the first thing it says, it says, unless otherwise expressly authorized by the planning board through the site plan review approval, all parking and loading areas shall be subject to the design requirements of this section. One of the design requirements of that section are the setback requirements of 50 feet in the MRL District. So 325-42 expressly says that this board can expressly authorize a waiver of any provision of those setback requirements. Furthermore, in the, in the Howard Center Overlay District, 325-51O, five, which are those dimensional requirements, it, it sets forth in the, in the Harvard Center Overlay, certain dimensional requirements. It has setback requirements for the building. And it says, parking shall be permitted at the side or rear of the property. I can only read that to mean that parking is permitted at the side or rear lot line. Because you're already allowed to have parking to the side of your building or the rear of your building as long as you meet your setback requirements. So I can only read that as specifically permitting in the Harvard Center Overlay District, parking at the side or rear. But even if it didn't, subsection F of the Harvard Center Overlay bylaw says the board may waive or modify these dimensional requirements if it finds that such waiver or modification will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. And that such waiver or modification may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood or public good. So it actually gives the board the authority to waive those dimensional requirements in the HCO bylaw. And that makes sense because the Harvard Center Overlay was designed to provide certain dimensional relief to applicants, given the density of that particular area and given the need to locate parking in buildings closer to lot lines, for example. So I have to disagree with Attorney Reed that this requires any zoning relief at all. Just as this board is authorized to grant special permits when it is the Site Plan Review Granting Authority, it's also specifically authorized under this board to waive parking requirements generally under, under 325-42 and also specifically under 325-51 Harvard Center Overlay. With regard to Attorney Reed's argument that the structure itself requires a variance, he's right. Your non-conforming use provisions require that buildings other than one or two family residential structures that are being altered will require certain relief from this board. But we're not altering the structure. What we're proposing is a use that is specifically permitted by special permit in this district, provided it meets the requirements of the MRL, multifamily density bylaw, and would meet the requirements of the special permit in the Site Plan Review. So there's no way that this board can read this bylaw as saying, well, you're taking an existing building and you're creating a use that specifically is permitted by special permit granted from this board, that it somehow requires any zoning relief other than those permits that are granted by the board. And finally, Attorney Reed talks about the detriment to the neighborhood. Well, he's right. Using this building will create an intensive use that's not there right now as a vacant building. There's no question about that. But the voters went to town meeting for the, for this multifamily dwelling bylaw, and they actually created a standard for the number of units that are permissible in, for multifamily dwellings. And it's in subsection 5, it says, the number of multifamily dwelling units shall be determined by the ability to place an adequately sized septic system for the number of bedrooms and required parking per number of units and landscaping on the site pursuant to Article 9 off-peak parking and loading requirements. So what we're proposing here is a number of parking spaces that exactly, actually it exceeds by two spaces, the number that are required for this particular use. They're all located on the property in conformance with 425, I'm sorry, 325-42 and the HCO. So, you know, whether or not they're within 50 feet of the sideline or not is up to this board to determine whether you think that that's going to substantially derogate from the spirit or the intent of the bylaw. And our belief is that a parking area is really where people park and leave their cars. It's not where they conduct social activities. It's not where they, where they undertake any kind of a commercial use or even a residential use. The location of the parking area within 50 feet of a sideline in the Harvard Center Overlay District is specifically identified as a permissible use in the HCO. And so I don't think the board could find that this particular use of that area for a parking area within 50 feet is going to be substantially more detrimental or going to derogate from the spirit or the intent of the bylaw. And finally, this multifamily dwelling bylaw places more of a burden on adjacent landowners because of the number of units that are available. But there's a reason for that. The reason for that is until this bylaw passed, there really wasn't an ability to locate multifamily dwelling projects in the town in any meaningful way. So without going into the special permit requirements generally or the site plan review, all I can say is that if there is some type of an intensity of use that the abutters don't like or they're worried about, it's not, it's not a new building. It's not even a new, real use of the building. It's still a residential use of this building. But whatever additional intensity is occasioned by having 43 parking spaces or 26 affordable, small A affordable units, is something that the townspeople, I think, consider carefully in saying you can have this density as long as you meet these requirements. And finally, I would say, without going into the, the other requirements of the multifamily dwelling, this project meets all of the requirements of that dwelling to a T. And I won't go through them in light of the hour. But this project has been designed to meet every requirement of your MFD, of your MFD bylaw. And again, thank you for letting me rebut those points and I'll stand by it.
Thank you, Mr. Zender. Any response from Mr. Reed or?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I disagree that you have the authority under the waiver provision to address this parking setback requirement. So I won't repeat that, but understand that I do not agree with Mr. Zender on that. But let's take it one step further. What if you do? Is it appropriate to grant that waiver? That's in your discretion at, at best. I, I don't think it really is within your authority, but even under his argument, it's not entitlement. It's something that falls within your discretion. And if over half of the parking spaces they need are too close to the neighbors and to the street than they're supposed to be, is the site really suited to accommodate those parking spaces? If over half of them don't fit what the standard that is otherwise required for every other parking space in the district? As for whether or not the change of use requires a variance, the bylaw is very specific. It says in Paragraph 54 subpart 7B, all other non-conforming structures, and other means other than one and two family residential. All other non-conforming structures shall require a variance for the Board of Appeals pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 10 for any alteration, slash, extension, or reconstruction. This is clearly an alteration of the, of the premises. Not only are all the rooms being reconfigured and 25, I believe, kitchens being added. Take a look at number 111 Parallel Street. That's not even a residential structure at this time. It's an accessory building to the previous use. It's proposed to be completely renovated into four residential units. If that's not an alteration to accomplish, to accomplish a change of use, I don't know what is. So I would suggest to you that the variance is absolutely required for the change of use, notwithstanding the fact that this special permit procedure permits you to address that if it were a conforming building. It requires the Board of Appeals as well because it's a non-conforming building. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any comments from the board?
Can I make a comment, please, to the public?
Yes, who's, who's speaking?
Peter Antonellis.
Yes, hello, sorry, didn't see you.
I'm not speaking as a lawyer or retired lawyer. As a social worker, I'll tell you that I, I hear what Mr. Brophy had to say and I can sympathize with the situation. But as a resident of Parallel Street, who is very, very familiar with that location for this proposal, that is, the corner of Bank Street and Parallel Street, having visited there numerous times, having served with the Department of Elder Affairs previously as their site auditor for that assisted living residence, I can tell you that that place was the quietest assisted living I stepped into. And I would see 150 of these places every year. There was no activity there. Neighbors never knew the place was there. You might see an elderly person walking down the street. So when I read Attorney Zender's narrative, I giggle a little bit to myself when I read it. It's, it's not going to improve pedestrian activity in town. We don't have a sidewalk on Parallel Street. It's a dangerous corner. I understand from the diagrams that were provided in the application that one driveway will be taken out of use and, or will only be used as an emergency vehicle use. That's fine. But every day that I walked down that street to go to the library, or used to go to the library, it was a danger walking past that corner. People fly up from Harwich Port on Bank Street and tuck into Parallel Street. The only sign they see of a speed limit is after they've already crossed into Parallel Street. And they hit that little sign there that's over near the inn on the corner. It's a very small sign, says thickly settled and 30 miles an hour. But they're already 35 or 40 or 45 coming into this town center. There's no warning that people should be slowing down. They're going to hit a dense area. Well, they wouldn't hit the elderly. For the most part, they stayed at home. My question is, do they really have enough parking as they're proposing it anyhow? These days, when the UPS truck comes to my house, it drives into my driveway. FedEx, they come in my driveway. Post Office doesn't. But everyone taking deliveries, they usually come in my driveway at 100 Parallel Street. And I welcome them for that. They're not on the street. I always tell them, be careful pulling out. Cars drive fast down Parallel Street. I've been here 30 years. I know the streets. I don't think it's, I don't think it's adequate to, the parking that they have or the proposing to have is, I mean, what happens when the electrician comes or the painter or any other service entity that's required to come down to a place like that. They didn't come very often for the elderly. But if they have 35 apartments or whatever it's going to be, 30 apartments, 26 apartments, it's going to be a little different. It's certainly going to be far more intense. I don't have any comment except to say I know we need affordable housing. I don't have any comment except to say I know we need affordable housing in Harwich, but to me, this looks like it's a possibility of just opening up for the town its proposal to convert the recreation building at the other end of Parallel Street into affordable housing. It's got to be appropriate to the context and I certainly, if they're going to put this project in and improve it down in the corner of Parallel and Bank Street in the old assisted living facility, they better ban any parking on the street of all the delivery vehicles that'll be servicing, whether they're bringing in prepared meals or whatever else, because they've got two driveways close to the intersection. And there shouldn't be any parking anywhere near that corner. I know the police complained about the sight line looking south when they come down the street. They're coming down Parallel Street. They want to go down into Harwich Port. I don't know where they're going to go, but they want to be able to cross that crosswalk safely. And it's kind of difficult if you've got service vehicles or delivery vehicles. The landscapers pull in with a truck and a long trailer behind them. It's impossible to get around that safely if you're driving on Parallel Street. And it's not made much better if you're pedestrian. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony Ellis.
You're welcome, sir.
Can I make a comment? This is Judith Underwood.
Yes, please. Tell us where your address, please.
Sure. 220 Sisson Road in Harwich Center. I'm a water commissioner in town and I'm also on the Affordable Housing Trust. And I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Brophy. He very eloquently articulated what many of us are thinking. I am from the neighborhood and I understand what some of the concerns might be, but you know what? We had the same concerns when a hotel went in on that street, especially when it was enlarged. And it's okay. But this town needs housing for young people. This town needs housing for older folks that are coming, that want to move out of their homes, but they're not ready for assisted living and they would like an apartment. This is something that absolutely needs to be addressed. And what I'm truly excited about are a number of things. Number one, this is in a central village location. It's away from our water wells, which is quite important, looking long-term for the town. But secondly, this really allows for a walkable village. These folks are not going to be driving around. They're going to be walking and utilizing the cafes and the stores that are in the town center. And we've been talking about revitalizing the town center for a very long time. This will be a wonderful addage to it. But most importantly, and we went through this at town meeting, this, what was it, in June? The town voted specifically to allow these types of housing that we just have not been able to do before. The town recognizes that there is a need for alternative types of housing. And I'm absolutely thrilled that the owners are looking to make three of those units by deed affordable and restricted by income. That is wonderful. This is a great opportunity for the town. Personally, I think it's a great opportunity for the neighborhood. You can walk to the library. You can walk to Brooks Park. There's a playground there and on and on and on. And it'll really, it'll revitalize everything. I think it's a wonderful project and I think they've done a really nice job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stoltz.
Yes, Mr. Stoltz.
I just have a couple of things I'd like the board to think about.
Thank you.
Number one would be a traffic study. And number two would be a sidewalk on the front of that project. And it's two things I would like to see talked about and considered.
Thank you, Bill. I see the, we're in cash. Would like to, the families online here would like to address us. Would you please?
Hi, Diane Rankus.
Address us, thank you.
We live at 316 Bank Street. We moved in in July of 2020.
Pronunciation of your name, sorry. I hope I wasn't mutilating it.
It's Rankus, the C is silence.
Thank you.
No problem. We moved here in July, but we are not new to Harwich. We knew this neighborhood. So I had a couple of questions and I may be confused and not really understand, but I understand there's a lot of emotional talk about affordable housing. I completely agree with that and understand the need. But when I read the proposal, I didn't see anything about housing. I saw small units. I didn't see anything about rent control. I didn't see anything about capacity limits. I didn't see green space, if there were families there, play space for children. So if it's truly affordable housing that the town needs, and again, I'm not against it, affordable housing, this doesn't seem to be it. This seems to be fitting a square peg in a round hole. Again, I'm new to this, but from what I see, when I look at this proposal, I don't, 10% of 26 units is two units. So to call this affordable housing, this is a for-profit entity. So again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm a campus minister at a Catholic high school. I teach social justice. Basically, that's where I'm coming from. I'm fully aware of the need of affordable housing, but I don't see that this fitting the bill for this town. And I think that, I agree with everything that Mr. Reed brought forward in terms of the legalities and the provisions. I think that a multi-family unit would be fine. It's just the number of families of what you're saying, this family housing and parking is excessive in that part of the town, which in my history in this town has been so committed to conservation and green space. So it seems a little bit contradictory to me. So my questions are really, is does this property and this proposal from a for-profit entity fit the bill for affordable housing? What is the rent on a 10 by 10 studio apartment? And is that truly affordable for a single working person in the town of Harwich? Or a young family? Those are my questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Judith Underwood again. Can I just speak about the affordable housing for one, just for clarification for the speaker? Yes, so in the town, ma'am, we have an Affordable Housing Trust and that is, so there's two issues. There's affordable housing by income, which this is, this project is addressing not rent control, but affordable housing in the sense of that you can work a 40-hour-a-week job and afford to pay like 30% of your wage in that respect. And we do not have that type of housing here on Cape Cod. And it's, it's, that type of housing is just diminishing rapidly, especially with the pandemic. We have people with second homeowners moving into their homes and the rentals, there's just not many rentals on Cape Cod for year-round workers. By workers, I mean, police officers, teachers, firemen, clerks, waitresses. But there's just not a rental stock here on Cape Cod for them to access. And so this, this particular building is very unique because it's in the center of the town and it's in a walkable area and it will provide apartment space for that. And there may be some small families that will be able to move in as well. And three of those units will be restricted to the different affordable housing levels. Thanks.
I have alongside what my wife had to say.
Mr. Gray, just a moment, please. For, I wanted, this is not an affordable housing development. We're not hearing cases for or against affordable housing legislation. No, that's not the issue here. The issue is compliance to the regulation for development in the town of Harwich. So I think we all, we understand what those rules are and the law permits this. This is not affordable housing development. It allows developers to use a certain allocation of their property for affordable housing. So this isn't, just to we understand here, this isn't the forum for that kind of a discussion.
No, I understood. So to add on to what my wife was saying, you know, a lot of the emotional pleas for this were taken by Mr. Brophy and others and Ms. Underwood were taking an affordable housing bent. And the point that I wanted to add on to my wife's is, I appreciate that you took everybody's letters and summarized them for the board and categorized them, but I think you did a great disservice compared to the grievous motion that was before the board with Mr. Patel. The board in that case facilitated a point-counterpoint between Mr. Patel and the plaintiffs and the letter writers. This did not, you summarized, the board had no comment. I mean, Mr. Chadwick gave us a great explanation of how high trees can grow in one year, but we had no, we've had no interaction with the board on this whatsoever. You write our letters, put them into the record and we haven't discussed them back and forth with the developer. Is that going to take place or am I?
What we're doing right now is that, the point is that what we did, the purpose for reading a summary is, unlike the previous project, we had one letter. Here we have 13 letters. So it's a matter of.
During that time, Mr. Barry, Chairman Barry, your board actively participated in facilitating those point-counterpoints. This one, you asked the board if they had any questions and everybody stayed silent. Is not, is not the letters of 16 board members or 16 town members important enough to discuss point-counterpoint with a developer of something like this?
I think our considerations at this point for the board are the legal debates between competing sides. Of course, we're interested in what the community is saying, absolutely. But I think we have an obligation to first wrestle with the combating legal interpretations about what we've heard tonight about change of use, use variances and the like. So I think we actually have quite a bit to chew on, you know, before we get to some of the other issues which are emotional, which are very important. And we've been chatting, you know, that's been part of what we're doing here.
I, you know, this is our first time in one of these, so it's, I just, I was comparing the two and it seemed a little bit different.
This Mazlofski, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to just say that you had spoken a little earlier about this not being an affordable housing development. And while I don't disagree with you on that, I also want to say that the town of Harwich has a housing production plan that this planning board supported, that the Board of Selectmen supported and that we put forward. And some of that housing production plan is to see that capital A affordable housing is created in the town of Harwich and that small A affordable housing is created in the town of Harwich. And as a chairperson of the Historic District and Historic Commission, I also have to say that when we permitted the 711 Main Street that was just before the planning board, we took into consideration how that would help to create a Harwich Center district, a livable district that people could walk to and would have, which is appropriate for affordable housing and is appropriate for residential housing. That's what makes a village, a village a village. It's what has revitalized Harwich Port Center and it's what's going to revitalize Harwich, the Historic District Center as well. So while this might not be an affordable, a capital A affordable application, I don't think it is, it's necessarily inappropriate for us to discuss the benefits that even little A housing can have in the town and in the Historic District as well. I mean, the part of revitalizing the Village District is to have residents living there and the ability for residents to walk to the library, walk to a grocery store, walk to a restaurant to have lunch or dinner. So it is appropriate. And just to the, those members of the public that are, that are in attendance and that may not be familiar with our public hearings, I don't necessarily know that the board itself, I may still have questions even after hearing some of the public. So, you know, we may not have been completely formal in exhausting all of the board's questions before we started hearing from members of the public. But, you know, every public hearing is different and, you know, I know I still have some questions, but I'm trying to listen and go forward. And, you know, I don't think it's necessarily, necessarily a situation where you can compare apples to oranges. And this is a full permitting, full permitting situation. So I just wanted to say that while I was watching.
This is Art Boden. You made reference to my letter that I sent. I was the only one that had sent the letter apparently that was in favor of this project.
Yes, could you identify your address, please?
Arthur Boden, 800 Orleans Road, Harwich. Okay, and you referenced my letter. I was the only one in favor of this project that sent the letter. I know there's other people there that are in favor of it. I have to comment, you have to take and heart some of Mary's comments. She had to nail that on the head. The town has, the town board, we have a housing production plan. All these things have been voted on and approved and this is the way we're supposedly going forward. And then every time we try to take a step, the crowds come out and block it. But I like to, just aside from that, I like to just kind of go over a couple of points in my letter and also a couple of things that Mary just said. One of the things I pointed out in my letter is we're rebuilding, we're revitalizing the Harwich Center with new buildings. And who's going to use those buildings? Who's going to go into those stores if there's no one living around here? So now we got this housing opportunity coming and now we're reviving the center a block away and it's like, it's like a marriage made in heaven. I mean, you couldn't ask for anything better. You know, we've got people, we've got new businesses. And so where are we going to put the people? You know, 10, 20 miles down the road, they're not going to come to the center. We're going to have people at the center to come to the center. Now, that was one point I made. Another point I made is I go by that building at least once or twice a day and I'll tell you, a vacant building, it ages real quick and that is starting to show its age. That lends itself to what other options do you have on the table tonight? This is the only option you have on the table. And I bet anything it'll be the only option coming down the pike for the next foreseeable future. This is what we're voting on tonight, not what might happen or could have happened or should have happened, but what the option is before you tonight. So those are the things you have to take into consideration. And the overriding thing is it's going to help people. Remember, it's people. Everyone in this room, everyone has a place to go home tonight. It is in a place, obviously, they're in their own home and they're comfortable. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to say, no, I got mine. You shouldn't have yours. I'm going to point out another little point. We just, we just had a census in this country and the census also went through Harwich. I wasn't part of the census, but I know someone that was part of the census. And if you saw where some of the people are living and how they're living here in Harwich, you'd be ashamed of yourself by trying to block a decent project coming along that's going to be affordable to a lot of people.
I want to stop you there. We're not trying, my point, and I think you- We're not trying, I, my point, and I think the others, we're not trying to.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect.
A lot of questions that we wanted to ask. We're not trying to block.
Point of order? Point of order?
I'll just finish up and I'll, 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 I'll get off the screen. You know, I, I grant you, parking is an issue. Traffic is an issue. Where the kids are going to play is an issue. All these things are issues on Cape Cod. You know, it's a small place. We, we got little roads. There's hardly any parking anywhere. Even now during a pandemic, I live over here on Route 39. Some mornings I wait five, five, six, seven minutes to pull out of my driveway and it's the middle of a pandemic. You should have seen what's in the summertime, but it's Cape Cod. We love it. So we put up with it, you know, and, and a lot of other things we put up with. But the one thing we shouldn't put up with is, is a great project like this and, you know, and, and it's for people. It's not against people. It's for people. I keep saying this, I can't say it enough. It's for the people of Harwich. Thank you very much. I'll get off now.
This is Great House.
I was just going to say, point of order. All comments need to go through the chairman. You need to be recognized. You cannot just speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to, considering the hour, I'd like to ask the board for what it wishes to do here, whether we have enough material here to close the hearing or do we want to continue?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Maslowski.
Just as a point, you know, our colleague, Mr. Stoltz, had requested the possibility of a traffic study. So through you to Attorney Zander, is that something that the applicant would be willing to do in this regard? You know, a traffic study for those intersections?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And, and to the member, they could, you know, there's, there's two, two reasons why I don't think it's necessary or advisable or maybe in my client's business. One is that, you know, a traffic study, there's two different types of traffic studies. You can either go out there and, and start counting cars, which probably, you know, January, February, March is the best time to count cars. But you do need it for some period of time, which I don't think, and the second part of a traffic study is to provide you with, under the national standards for traffic, you know, what type of traffic is generated by this type of use based on unit size and bedroom count. You know, I think that's probably more informative than the cars that are driving down parallel street or bank street. I, I always say this and I sound a little flip when I say this, I don't mean, every traffic study that I've read in, in my 30 years of experience has not given me any more information that the board member sitting on that, on that project know, already know about the intersection and the road and the traffic patterns that are out there. So I, a traffic study a lot of times is really checking a box, but it's going to impose cost and delay. I don't think it's going to tell the board anything more about this project than you already know. You know the road, you know the traffic, you know the town, you know the traffic patterns. We could do it, but it's going to just, it's going to slow this project down by a month or two months and you're going to look at that traffic study and I, I know that people will look at it and try to rip it apart. You know, if you are going to require some kind of a study, I'd much rather see us just provide a report as to the national standards as to what kind of traffic is generated by this type of use. But I really hope that this board doesn't require that. We really hope this board can look at this on the merits of what you have. If you feel a traffic study is required, we can do it, but it's just, I, I don't think we're going to be sitting here in any different dynamic than you're sitting right now looking at this project if you have a traffic study. Finally, you know, the police chief looked at this project and actually went out there and talked with, you know, at least one concerned citizen and the police chief and his, his officers know this here and provided guidance to the board as to what he thought would be appropriate in terms of addressing any traffic concerns that were out there. So I, I think you already have feedback from probably the person most knowledgeable in the town and I hope you don't require it. We could, so obviously we can do it. We really don't want that delay, you know, to come down. So thank you. I hope that addresses the question, Mr. Maslowski.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stoltz?
Yes, Mr. Stoltz.
I also had the board to address the sidewalk concerns that project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zander.
We're happy to install a sidewalk. You know, if the board wants a condition, a revised site plan with the, with the sidewalk along, along the street, we're happy to present that to the board.
Okay. Yes, Charlene.
Just a clarification, this fronts on parallel as well as Bank Street? Where is, where is the discussion about the sidewalk on both? On one? Just, just to clarify, so the, so as staff, I know what the applicant needs to do.
Bill?
I think it should be on both. You may, may have to ask the town to put a crosswalk in?
Exactly.
Right. I think if we're looking at 300% increase in parking, these are safe terms that we ought to move ahead with prudently to make sure that we dot some, these are more than eyes that are getting dotted here. So.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's Mary. So through you, Attorney Zander and to Charlene as well, what would be, how quickly could we see revised plans and how quickly could the town review revised plans so that we could look at a date for a continuance?
We would need to, we, through you, Mr. Chairman, we would need to get them no less than two weeks prior to the meeting to allow the town engineer, myself, to have ample time to review. I did want to make one comment regarding crosswalks. You can only have a crosswalk if you go from one cur, one lawful sidewalk curb cut to another lawful sidewalk curb cut. So if there is not a clean and ADA compliant place to have those crosswalk to adjoining curb cuts in a sidewalk, then you cannot put a crosswalk in.
Mr. Harris? I see you wanted to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was going to suggest that we need two crosswalks and, and if they need curb cuts, they can be built. One on between the south side of Parallel Street and the entrance to the, I guess it's pretty close to the entrance to the library. And the other is across Parallel Street, just west of Bank Street. I think there's already a sidewalk on banks, on the west side of Bank Street. There may not be between Parallel Street and 39, but they, but if, if we're going to have people there that we want to become pedestrians, we've got to provide safe accommodations for them to, to be pedestrians. No one, no one wants to see, wants to add traffic to their neighborhood. It's, it's just endemic to an American. Do I want to increase the traffic in my neighborhood? Of course not. But it, but there's a real need for affordable housing. There's a real need for housing that, that, that can be afforded by people that don't need affordable housing, but they need reasonably cost, housing of reasonable cost. So we have, sometimes it's necessary to make trade offs. This perhaps is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, Arthur Rouse?
One moment, Mr. Rouse. Can I just acknowledge Ms. Rankus, please?
Hi, I just have one question for Mrs. Zander. I believe I've got answered. In your business plan, your client's business plan, what is the proposed rent for one of these studio apartments?
The, the studio apartment is committed around $1,200 or $1,300 per studio apartment.
Okay, so $1,200 or $1,300 per month for 10 by 10 studio apartment?
Yep.
Okay. I just think that that should be noted and when you are looking at affordability, I don't think that it's affordable housing for. I'm not against this project. I think it's apples and oranges. I think that that is not affordable for a working person. That is not, that's not affordable for a first year teacher, a first year policeman. So I think that that schedule of proposed rents for that property, I think this board needs to focus in on that. And before you start congratulating yourselves on the fact that you're bringing affordable housing to Harwich, you realize that the people that you're looking at, they can't afford that. So I think that that's really, really important. And again, I, I know this is an emotional subject, so I may be an emotional plea, but if we're both being put up the term affordable housing, we need to understand what the cost is going to be for that housing. That is one issue that seems to be coming up. I know that's not what we're voting on, but it seems to be, everyone brings that up, their issue, and they tack it on at the end. So I think the schedule of proposed rents, and that's only going to increase as time goes by, and guess what? Two and three people are going to live in the apartments to afford them. And that means three cars. But I want to make that noted, that I think that the business plan of the proposed rents needs to be considered when looking at capacity, capacity limits, how it's going to be enforced, any sort of rent subsidies, control, I don't know the terminology, will be looked at. I think that's very, very important. Thank you.
That's, that's actually a, you know, for affordable housing issue because the planning board does not get involved in rents because this is not capital A affordable. So, but thank you for your comments. I, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Rouse.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were, we were speaking, Mr. Stoltz was speaking about possibly having a traffic study done. I happen to agree with, with what he's saying. We're talking about sidewalks now. We're talking about maybe adding signage to the area. And I don't think, I heard a time constraint. I don't think we can put a time constraint on any type of safety, whether it be for adults, children or anyone else in that area. So I think a traffic study should be looked at. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Alex, Alex Barden. I work with the development team in the ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Barden.
Thank you all for your time and I know it's late. I appreciate you all here. The first thing I'd like to talk about is that there currently is a sidewalk on Bank Street in front of 328, in front of 328 Bank Street. It runs the entire frontage of the, of the property and it will remain. As for putting a sidewalk in front of Parallel Street, we're more than happy to do so if the board wishes. However, it'll be a sidewalk to nowhere as no other neighbors on the street that we know of have sidewalks. As for crosswalks and things of that nature, we are all for it. We think that this is a great walking community and we would like to contribute to that fact. Unfortunately, we cannot wave a magic, we, we don't have the capacity or ability to just start paving and, and painting sidewalks on. If it were the wish of this board for us to contribute in that manner, make a financial donation to, to the paving or, or the sidewalk or the downtown pedestrian fund or whatever it might be, we are more than happy to do so. As Mr. Zander pointed out, our attorney, we're not against a traffic study in any way. I, I've built many buildings and I've seen traffic studies reflect whatever who pays for them wants it to reflect. Let's just be honest truth. Our opposition can get one that'll say one thing and we'll get one that'll say the other and we'll debate that to the end of time. Everyone on this call understands the traffic and especially in the summer times. I grew up summering in Harwich. The, the, the primary investor in this property and the owner of this property lives in Harwich. We understand the issues and we can't cure them. While I agree that maybe we are asking for more cars by the bylaw, it is not a 300% uptick on the intersection. We have more people coming out of our sight between the hours of nine during normal work hours to get to and from their jobs that they hopefully will have in the community. And while I know this is not about affordable housing, I would like to say we own units and manage units all over Cape Cod and we are familiar with what affordable housing can pay us for these units. If we were to switch that process and that project, we would get more rent than $1,200 per, per studio. Our goal is to have working people in these units. That is our goal. I hope I answered some of the questions and that, and that if the board has any more, we welcome them.
Thank you, Mr. Barden. Ms. Great House?
Yes, just a couple of things. I do think, you know, if, if the board feels a traffic study is in order, then, you know, then it's in order. But I think you do need to clarify, as Mr. Zander said earlier, what type of traffic study you would want to see, because there are a couple of different kinds as outlined by Mr. Zander. With regard to crosswalks, I agree, there is a desperate need for crosswalks. However, crosswalks have to be reviewed and approved. A crosswalk, there's a document in town that if you want to have a crosswalk, you have to meet certain things and there's an application. So ultimately it is up to the DPW director and the Board of Selectmen to authorize when and where crosswalks can go. So it is a, as, as Mr. Barden said, they can't just go and paint a crosswalk. It needs to be lawful. It needs to be ADA compliant and a number of other things. I, the, the issue of rent, this board cannot get involved in rent. If the three units are going to be deemed capital A affordable, they can be deed restricted. However, they will not count towards our 10%, which I don't think is really an issue for this. Those would be the only ones that would have a deed restriction and it is HUD who determines what the rent is based on the area median income for Barnstable County. So I just wanted to throw a couple of those, those points out there. I had another one and it just completely escaped me, but, but you would need to determine what type of traffic study it is that, that you want. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. It's entirely up to the board, but I think you do need to specify exactly what, what you're looking for in a traffic study.
Agreed. Thank you very much, Charlene. That's, those are all excellent points. Okay, I, just to make sure, I'm not arguing against affordable housing. I think that's beside the point. He says, we can't make those decisions. Some of those decisions, we're making a decision based on some of the, just the kind of technicalities here involved with competing viewpoints on what the law says can and cannot be done. So are there any other comments on how the board like to proceed? Can we continue? Can we close? What are, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to know what kind of a traffic study Mr. Stoltz would be looking for and what kind of a traffic study Charlene would recommend if we do request one.
Excellent questions.
I would like to hear what Charlene would recommend for a traffic study.
Charlene?
Sorry, actually somebody who's on the meeting actually sent me a photograph and there is actually right now a crosswalk across Parallel Street. So there is a crosswalk there. As far as a traffic study, my brain's getting a little fuzzy at this time of the evening. If I could defer to something to, to Mr. Zander, Attorney Zander, you highlighted two different types then. One was actually traffic counts, which I'm not sure what that would do. The other would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, the other would be to determine what the traffic generation would be for this type of use. And, you know, and I'm not really sure what that's going to provide for you all. You know, that, there are those two kinds of traffic studies. One is actually counting the traffic, which I think we already know there's an issue on Parallel Street, but that's probably a discussion that needs to be had, you know, with the police department and/or the traffic study committee regardless of this project. You know, if there's an issue on the road now, that should be addressed in other avenues. So I, in all honesty, I'm not exactly sure what to recommend. So in all honesty, I'm not exactly sure what to recommend for a traffic study.
So this is Mary.
Mary.
What about the second, the, what type of traffic this use would, we would expect it to generate versus what the prior use? Could it generate?
Ms. Chair.
This is Zender. I think that second type, which is what we call a traffic impact study, as opposed to, you know, that doesn't involve doing traffic counts and telling you what is exactly out there. The report that identifies the use and provides you with information about the projected number of trips in and out based on the number of units, number of betters, I think would be more helpful to this board. If the board's going to require it, if the board is going to require a travel report, I think that's the one that we think would be more helpful to the board. And also, it's something that we could obtain in less time because it doesn't require scheduling people to go out there and, you know, provide you a trip count in January, February, which, you know, you're going to take with a plan of salt, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you. I would ask the board for us to really request a traffic study that we think long and hard about what it is we're looking for the study to do for us. For example, if the traffic study says this proposal is going to generate five additional trips on Parallel Street between these hours at a given time versus 50, are we in a position that we're going to then start debating what number is the correct number? I guess what I'm getting at is, I don't really understand, I haven't heard clearly what a traffic study is going to do for us to help us make a decision as we go forward about how we vote for this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Bill. The traffic study, if we can, should be reviewed for them to tell us where a crosswalk would go from Bank Street, the west side, to cross over to the east side so people can get access to the library, to the school system, and to the park. So that should be part of that study. That's what I'm looking for. I'm more concerned with the walking traffic. So that's something I'd like to see done.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I think we all know where the major congestion is. At that location, it's people coming up Bank Street and turning left on 39. I've driven down Parallel Street a number of times where I haven't even seen another car. So, you know, a traffic study to show there's a significant increase on Parallel Street would certainly be expected. That way, with the paving, we'd get our money's worth from it. The, I think a pedestrian study would be equally important to us. And I don't know that either, as Mr. Stoltz said, or Mr. Chadwick said, I don't really see that the results of a traffic study will help us address this issue. The issue seems to be that people like to keep their neighborhood the way it is.
Right. I think another issue that we're looking at too is the fact that, as Attorney Reed said, there's going to be an increase in, necessary increase in traffic, foot and vehicular. And the question therefore is, you know, what is the basic flow? Is this northbound on Bank, north, and where, when people are exiting the facility, are they going south on Bank or west on Parallel to go south on Sisson? You know, I mean, what is, do we even have an idea of what the main, the main, you know, direction of current would be?
Mr. Chairman.
This is Zender.
We won't be able to tell you that. You know, we can't tell you the people living in this facility, whether they're going to go this way to a particular restaurant or that way to get to work. We don't, and I don't think a traffic study will tell you that. A traffic study will tell you the projected number of trip ends into and out of this facility based on that particular use. And traffic counting, if we do it, will tell you what the existing traffic patterns are at a particular period of time. You know, again, as I'm listening to this board, I don't think this traffic study is going to give you any useful information about a whole of this project. I think, again, we'll do it if you want us to, but I think it's just, I think it's made for.
Mr. Winston?
Yes, Greg Winston. I guess probably I've listened to everything, the entire discussion. And I'm going to, obviously, will defer to my attorney. David Reed has done an excellent job. But I will say this. I can tell each and every one of you on this screen that no one has lived on this corner any longer than I have. I bought that building from which we are Harbor Club Snowwind, Frank Thompson, in 1979 for $20,000. And I put my life into it. I know what the traffic is like on Parallel Street, and I know for a fact that Parallel Street is a bypass via Main Street, and it is used by the police department, the fire department, for all kinds of emergencies. And that stop sign that sits on the corner is useless. It's a slide-around corner. And you can talk to my friend Jean Mangillo, who's on the screen right now, and she lives right across from that stop sign. So I am not going to say anymore. But I tell you, I have taken my life and given it to the town of Harwich because I love my town so much. And I have made, that building was beautiful at one point in time. And it's fallen into disrepair. I spent 32 years on a historic district commission in this town, and I turned the reins over to Mary Maslowsky so that I could work on affordable housing. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I truly appreciate the board's sensitivity to our concerns about the traffic because we certainly raised and pressed that issue. But that's only one of the issues we raised. And I worry that if that's the only thing we're going to talk about, you're giving the applicant a false sense of where you're going. Because it has been my position that you can't get to the merits of the special permit request if you agree with any of the other legal issues that I've raised. And I don't want to come back and have you receive a traffic study that the applicant, as Mr. Biden says, will say what they wanted to say. And then, so, but we still have the other issues to deal with. That's not really being fair to the applicant. I really think that there are issues that prevent you from even getting to the merits of the special permit request, and including the traffic studies, traffic issues. But if you're not ever going to get to the merits of those because of the other issues raised, you should let the applicant know that now, in fairness.
Mr. Chairman.
Noah. If I may make one last comment, if I may. I want to echo what Mr. Winston has said. I've lived on Parallel Street for close to 30 years. I'm glad he brought the topic before I did. He's been here longer, so he has more cred. But it is, it's emergency vehicles that fly down the road, and the stop sign doesn't mean anything to them. The line of sight the officer mentioned is really only an issue if you're not stopping for the crosswalk. They're in a hurry, have a place to go. I understand that. I've been rescued by the emergency services, so I'm not going to complain about that. But that's one, emergency traffic on the street flies down at rocket speed. The other reason the street is used is because, as Greg said, it's a bypass from Main Street. Whether you're heading east out to East Harwich, and you're coming up from Dennis or wherever you're coming from, if you're going east or west, it's a bypass, so it gets used for that. The other traffic is folks coming out of the, I call it the alley. I don't know what you call it. It's a right-of-way, folks get to the Christie's Market that way. They come in, if they're coming up from down Bank Street, they come into Bank, coming up Bank Street into Harvard Center, they come down Parallel Street to go into the backside of the old Christie's Market. So they come in that way, they go out that way. Thirdly, or fourthly, excuse me, it's pedestrian traffic. Folks who live around town, anywhere near us, they walk to the town hall, they walk to the fields, they walk to the museum, the kids walk to the library. It's an issue about safety. Whether it's a 300% increase in traffic or not, I don't know. But the reality is, it's about making it a pedestrian-friendly area. It's kind of hard to do that when it's being used as a cut-through or pass or bypass, it's being used as an emergency avenue. Those are hard things, given what we face these days. It is hard to get through that intersection of Bank Street and Parallel Street if there are service vehicles on the road blocking your sight. You can't even get to the stop sign if they're parked there. But I heard a lot of good things. Mr. Biden's comments were great. You know, they're interested, they'll do whatever they need to do. And affordable housing is needed. But I don't think a traffic study will answer questions either. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Sheila Brennan, is that?
Yes, Sheila Brennan, 107 Parallel.
Thank you.
I am interested to know, I'm new to the area relatively, a few years. And I am interested to know what the commitment would be from the town because certainly adding a, this project would mean that the town would need to work on improving roadways, sidewalks, crosswalks, all those things, safety issues, you know. So does the town, does the planning board think about those things when they're considering these kinds of projects?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Again, it's Ben Zender, and I'm going to say something that's probably maybe a little out of place. But I think this is an application that the board could close the public hearing, could vote on, could require submission of a plan with a sidewalk along Parallel Street. And I think rather than spend time and money on the traffic study, we could very easily make a donation to the town to assist in those particular areas that the gentleman was referring to. Again, I don't think that there are any questions hanging out there from this board at this point. I think it's a matter of coming to the point where the board feels that it can responsibly close the public hearing and consider it on the merits. And so we would love to have a condition on submission of a plan for a sidewalk along the front that is in keeping with what the DPW wants or the town engineer, a condition on removing the fence, a condition on affordable restriction on three units. And if the board feels that it can lawfully, you know, have a donation of some amount of money to address those impacts that I think, of course, are going to flow from the project, we'd love to do that. But we would still, again, and I may be pushing it a little bit, and I apologize for that, but I think the board has what it needs to look at it, make findings. And I think Charlene's done a wonderful job of outlining exactly what those forms of relief are, the findings the board needs to consider at this point. So we'd rather not lose them off. And again, we thank you all for your time. I know the hour is late.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Mangillo?
Right, my name is Jean Mangillo, and I live at 327 Bank Street. And I don't think that we've really addressed all of our concerns. I mean, we enumerated our concerns in our letters, and I think we've touched on a couple of them. I think we've touched on the traffic study, and we've touched on safety. But I don't think we've touched upon the fact of the waste and waste management issue. I don't think we've talked about the Royal not having a representative there to mediate any type of disputes and concerns, that the neighbors might affect the neighborhood. I don't think we've really spent enough time on that. And I think that we need a little bit more time, and we need to have a little bit more of time to present that to the board for their consideration. I don't think it's a one-and-done, and, okay, you know, we'll do a traffic study, we won't do a traffic study, et cetera, et cetera. I think that we've enumerated concerns in our letters, and I don't think they've been addressed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I think that one of the things that we touched on a few minutes ago is ask the city attorney to determine whether or not Mr. Reed's letter regarding what's the authority of the planning board is something that we really need to check into. Charlene, do you agree with that? And how soon can that be done?
If I understand the question, you would like the last letter from Attorney Reed sent to town council for their opinion as to whether they agree with him? That would have to be a vote of the board to do that.
I will make that motion. Are we still, do we have to do that after we close the public hearing?
You would not close the public hearing if you want to gather more information. You can continue the public hearing at some point, but if you want additional information, you cannot close the public hearing.
I second, this is Craig, I second Dave's motion.
We have a motion, and it's, great discussion. Quick vote here. Would you like to express, would you put it in a proposition, Mr. Harris?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Do you repeat the motion to the great proposition?
The motion is to send the letter of January 4, 2021, from Attorney Reed to town council for an opinion as to if they agree or not.
Very good. So, Mr. Barden?
Yes, well, I understand the need and the desire to possibly do that by this board. My attorney, Mr. Zender, just responded his legal three hour. If we're sending this letter, that's a one-sided argument to town council, I don't think you should send any letter. My opinion would be to ask the council, if that's the way that you're going to go, if you have the ability to hear this hearing, not based on either of our testimonies, but on, I think, we determined that you guys have done this in the past. This Craig has said that we've voted on this in the past, your board has done that previously. And we would like to, if possible, move forward. We've been working on this for well over a year. And we've tried to bend over backwards to address every concern. And we continue to.
Thank you, Mr. Barden.
Mr. Barry, if I might, I mean, I agree with some of what Mr. Barden just said in that it usually is a question from the board, not necessarily opinion from one attorney or the other, but a question from the board as to whether the board is empowered to do something or not. You know, it is, I'm not taking sides here, but it is one-sided if you're only providing one opinion from one attorney and not a counter opinion from the other attorney. But it's entirely up to you.
Mr. Chair, can I offer an amendment?
Yes, there's not a word.
So I'd like to offer an amendment that the planning board seek a legal opinion from planning board council to determine whether, as the application is presented, whether the planning board has the authority to vote on the three special permits and the waivers.
I accept that amendment.
Can I offer one further amendment?
Wait, wait, point of order, it needs to be seconded by the original seconder before discussion.
This is Craig, I believe I seconded the ministry nurses first, so I second the amendment as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Reed?
I appreciate both the comments, and I agree with the gentleman that was Charlene. If I submitted my letter, that would be a one-sided review by town council. But by the contrary argument, if you only submit the petitioner's application without my counter letter, then you're again only giving town council one point of view to consider. I think if you really want an opinion from town council that is helpful to you, you should give the town council as much information as possible as to what you're considering. And so you should give him the applicant, the applicant's statement and argument, as well as my letter, and if they want, to listen to this video. But don't tie their hands by giving them less than all the information that you have available to yourselves. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes?
Look, again, this is, and, and I don't want me to be strident here, but the issues that my, that Attorney Reed raised, I don't believe are, are valid issues. I mean, he's raising these issues to benefit his client and to try to delay this process. You know, if the board's gonna seek legal counsel on this, I think at a minimum, I should be able to submit i- i- an analysis of the zoning code that I presented to the board orally tonight, so the board gets the, the board's question, Mr. Reed's question, and, and my question, all at the same time. But again, you know, again, we're, the, the rule of these hearings is try to get it denied, if you can't get it denied, get it delayed. And I think that's what's happening here. So, again, we would, we would hope the board would vote on this. I don't think the issue before the board is, is really an issue at all. I, I just don't see it. Thank you.
Mr. Zender?
There's a motion, and a, there's a motion and a second.
Yep. Any further comment?
Unless somebody wants to make another amendment.
Craig, I move the vote.
Okay. We have a vote for us. Motion, uh, it's been made, seconded, amended, and, uh, through a roll call vote. So, Duncan Barry? Pardon?
If we could just clarify what the motion is again, sorry. I just wanna be sure.
The clarification is maybe, you'd wanna give the clarification, Mary, but it was, I understand it was, uh...
The my offered amendment, my offered amendment that I believe was accepted and is what's on the table, uh, was that the planning board seek legal advice from planning board council to determine whether we have the authority to act on the, uh, three special permits for the waivers as presented in the application. And I would suggest, uh, as part of that, that our legal counsel would have available to, available to him whatever he would so choose to do in making an opinion. Because as, as an attorney, and as the fellow attorneys that are on this call, I'm sure would agree, none of us ever put an opinion together without looking at everything. So I don't think anyone's hands are hampered by, by not having anything available. I think counsel can certainly reach out to, to whatever he or she would need in order to make that opinion for us.
Thank you, Mary, I agree.
Bless to our vote. Duncan Barry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, no.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
And Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you, looks like we have, uh, six to one on that. Uh, I think that means that we probably ought to continue, uh, until we get that finding.
So, Mr. Chair, I had asked a question earlier about, um, if we were gonna seek a revised plan for sidewalks, uh, what the timing may be, so I don't, I don't know if the applicant would be able to get plans to Charlene early enough in order for us to look at a February 9th date. I, I would think January 26th may be too tight.
Right, we absolutely, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, through you?
Mr. Zender, yes.
I, I jumped ahead of you, I'm, I apologize. Um, we certainly could, uh, we would like to walk out of here tonight or find off, understanding exactly what the board's looking for, so that when we do do that plan, we know what the board believes they're looking for. But that day would work.
Okay.
So besides the sidewalks, what else does the board want to see amended on the plan or other information? Um, for my purposes, it, in writing the staff report, it would be helpful, um, to just have a, a letter, um, just indicating that the applicant's willing to do the three affordable units. Um, and my suggestion would be that those be based on, on the moderate, um, the, the median income, uh... I mean, it's up to you guys, but I would recommend, uh, the median income, um, for Burnsville County Retirement based on HUD. And I would do it at moderate income. Um, the other thing is the, um, sorry, again, it's the late hour, um, sidewalk, the affordable units, um, if the applicant is indeed willing to, um, uh, provide some kind of, uh, a donation towards sidewalk, towards crosswalks, you know, that kind of thing. So any, any of those statements that were made this evening that the applicant was willing to do, um, would be helpful in, in the applicant, in, in some kind of a letter, just to clarify. If I missed anything, folks, speak up.
Mr. Chairman, it's Craig.
Mr. Craig.
Thank you. Regarding the parking, uh, I'm sorry, regarding the sidewalks and the crosswalk, uh, could we include, Charlene, um, something that states, uh, you or, uh, the interim or the planning department would have conversations with the DPW with Link or whoever it is to make sure that, uh, we're talking about something that makes sense and fits all the other requirements for, um, sidewalks and so forth. I, I don't wanna end up with us, uh, making a condition for the, um, this proposal to say, let's put a sidewalk on Parallel Street from the corner of Bang to the end of the property line, and it ends up being a sidewalk to nowhere. I don't think there's any sidewalks on the west side of Bank Street of putting a sidewalk on Parallel Street in front of the proposed, uh, the property. Uh, the crosswalk would, in order to maintain the safety, it'd have to be a crosswalk across Bank Street somewhere at that location, I would think, that would then hook up with the sidewalk that goes up on the east side up to the corner. So, I really, what I'm saying is...
The only thing that they can show on their plan at this point is going to be a sidewalk along Parallel Street. The crosswalks is a conversation that needs to happen on a different day, and, and regardless of where this proposal goes, that's something totally different. That's a petition that needs to be done, um, whether it's by this board or folks on Bank Street or what have you. So they can't show the location of, of a crosswalk just arbitrarily. And as far as the sidewalk design, it needs to be in compliance with the American with Disabilities Act and Architectural Access Board of Massachusetts requirements. So the, the engineer, Dave McNevich, who I think is still on, you know, he's aware of the design requirements, and he also is aware of how he needs to tie into any existing, um, sidewalks that may exist. I don't think there's actually a, a formal sidewalk on Bank Street, um, I think. So he may need to have some conversations with, uh, Lincoln Hooper or our town engineer on that. It doesn't make sense for me to interject and then have the conversations. They all need to have that conversation together.
Thank you, Charlene, that's precisely what I, all I was saying was, let's include Link or DPW in, in this conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mary?
Just one quick question through you to Charlene. Isn't, um, isn't Griffin working on the Safe Streets program for the Howard Center anyway? So if he's gonna be looking at this plan, I would assume he'd be looking at it for everything, anyway.
Uh, could very well be. Um, it shows he's still on, but I don't actually think he is still on. Um, they're doing a number of different sidewalk initiatives, um, throughout the area, and throughout the area, I mean, the town. So this could very well be one of those.
Okay. Thanks.
And also, there's been no decision on whether a traffic study of some sort is gonna be needed unless I fell asleep at that point and missed something.
So where are we, board?
Dave Harris, aye. Uh, the traffic, uh, need for a traffic study was mentioned a number of times, but, uh, there were also comments that, what, what, what information would it provide us that would help us come to a conclusion? And there was a lot of silence. I, I don't see that, that a traffic study is really going to, uh, answer questions that are, that are essential for us to make the decision.
I think our, our major concern is with, uh, getting a finding from the, uh, count, the planning board council as voted on. Mr. McNevich?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification. There's talk about preparing a plan that shows a sidewalk on, uh, Parallel Street along this, this property. And, um, I mean, are we talking about a sidewalk that's gotta be ultimately used by the general public? That's gotta be out in the public way? I'm not sure that we can construct a sidewalk necessarily out in the public way. Um, so, uh, that may be something I'd want to discuss with, uh, Mr. Hooper. But, um, but, but also, I know on other projects, um, you know, applicants have sort of put money towards design of sidewalks, as I think someone suggested. But, you know, if you're gonna make a walkable downtown area here, a sidewalk along the frontage of this property is not achieving that goal. It does have to be part of a bigger project to, to construct, uh, a sidewalk all along Parallel Street to get, you know, along the way. So, I, I don't think, yes, can I draw a plan that shows a sidewalk along the pavement of Parallel Street? Yes, but I'm not sure that, one, uh, you know, that's gonna solve anything. It needs to be part of a bigger plan. And two, I don't think we can construct a sidewalk in the town's public way.
Mr. Chairman, I just kinda had a little epiphany. Um, and, and it's gonna be more, the board can't require it, but if the applicant, um, is, is willing to, uh, go along with it, um, for the purposes. So under the subdivision control law, you have a provision that, um, provides, uh, um, an in lieu of fee for sidewalks. So if a subdivision is out in the middle of nowhere, and there's really not a logical need for a sidewalk, they still need to provide a fee in lieu of the actual construction of the sidewalk. And as, uh, Mr. McNevich says, perhaps, you know, that might be the logical, um, uh, way to go on this until the town figures out how it wants to do sidewalks throughout the village. I don't know if that makes sense, I don't know if the applicant's willing to do that, um, ju- just, just kind of a thought at, at this hour.
Mr. Zender?
I, I actually, I think that's a good idea. Um, I, I think it, I, I don't wanna get into the reasons again, I, I think it's a good idea. And we could certainly, as part of our letter to the town, um, make a suggestion to that effect to a, to a, uh, to a, uh, an in lieu of fee. I think what I'd like to do is probably have a meeting with Charlene and Mr. Hooper and Mr. McNevich to see whether or not, you know, trying to design a sidewalk is a good idea or not. You know, it may well be that the town engineer says, you know, these are our plans, this is gonna, for our, from our standpoint, um, we don't really wanna go the sidewalk to nowhere, and we don't wanna have to try to deal with product construction within the town layout. So, um, I think an in lieu of fee is a great idea, it simplifies the matter, I think on both sides.
We would be willing to financially contribute as part of this project. The issue that we're currently facing is we've been working on this and, and paying engineers to continue to design things over and over. As it sits from this board tonight, and, and from everyone, we're hearing the issues, however, we do not know how to move forward. I- if, if these, if there are no other issues other than the fence and, and, um, in this side, we can remove a fence and get rid of the sidewalk. Is the board, are, are we at a place where we, we are comfortable, provided that we can get legal opinion? I, I'm confused, I've been to a lot of these, and I've never quite had one like this.
That makes a couple of us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mary?
I guess I'd, I'd done through you, ask if we could get a consensus of the board. I mean, to me, I think we're, um, we have the motion that we've approved that we need to seek legal counsel. So I think a continuance is in order, and, um, and, and, you know, perhaps February 9th is still a good day. And if the applicants feel the need to discuss with town employees, you know, town engineer, DPW director, um, interim town planner, to determine whether the sidewalk is appropriate or whether it should just be an in lieu of fee, then, uh, I would think that that could get done before the 9th. And then hopefully, we would have legal opinion by the 9th as well to be able to, um, move forward. I mean, we've, we've already voted the motion that we would, were requesting legal opinion. So, um, it seems like we're at a place that we should continue the public hearing to February 9th. Uh, but I put that out there, and I asked for my colleagues to either agree or disagree, and then we can move forward.
I see your mic is off, Mr. Chadwick?
Uh, I concur with Mary 100%, thank you.
Dave?
I agree.
Alan?
All right, I had to step out for one second. What, what was that?
Uh, we're kind of, it looks like we've got a little bit of a building consensus, so we ought to con- uh, continue until February 9th, uh, get our legal input, and, um, get a little more clarification on the part of the applicant with the town on some of the things that can be done, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Arthur?
I agree.
Why don't we do a, get a motion on the...
So I move that we, uh, continue the public hearing for PB 2020-26 Royal Apartments LLC to, uh, February 9th, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM, uh, in anticipation of receiving legal counsel's opinion, and, um, that the applicant will have some clarification on, um, what the town will or will, will or won't think is, uh, allowable as far as sidewalks are concerned.
You have a second?
Arthur Rouse, Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Uh, roll call vote, Duncan Barry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Mr. Chairman? This is Ben Zender, Dave, you heard on the continuance question?
Mr. Zender's asking for discussion on the motion and second.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't tell who was talking. Yes, Mr. Zender?
Yeah, Dave, Mr. Chairman, um, two things. One is, I, I don't think we were asking for a continuance to explore whether or not an in lieu of fee was, was preferable to a sidewalk. We believe that it is. So I think the only reason for a continuance would be to, to seek legal counsel on this matter. Um, second of all, you know, as I sit here right now, I have no sense of this board. I, I think I have a sense of what the board is looking for in order to move ahead, move the discussion of this project. Um, I don't have a sense that this is an exhaustive list of what the board's looking at, and we have no idea how the board itself, I, normally, board members will express, um, feelings about a project, you know, concerns they have, things like that. I have no sense of this board, if, you know, we're, we're, we're walking out of this hearing blind. And I'd love to have a sense of the board as to whether or not, you know, for example, if there's a member who says, you know, regardless of what you put in front of you, I can't vote for this. I, I'd love to know that before we spend more time going back, you know, and exploring other issues and, and, you know, the legal issues and coming back for the board months from now. It's one of the few hearings I've ever had with, with... It's one of the few hearings I've ever had with, you know, no feedback, just questions, I guess.
In anticipation of, we've had two excellent legal cases have been presented. I think we're wrestling with compelling arguments on both sides, both kind of legal and emotional issues. And we're kind of been battling with this. I think it's hard for us to come up with a resolution in a matter of minutes after we've gone through, I'm thinking the pack of letters and, I mean, we're looking at a really considerable high stakes thing here. So I think we probably ought to let everything settle out a little bit, come back at this fresh. Which is, I think, what the. We're in the middle of a roll call vote. We had two votes, aye, mine and Mr. Chadwick, continuing on Ms. Maslowski's motion. David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, no.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
So we are going to continue this until February 9th.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We're moving now to next item.
I'll be right back.
Okay.
That's my lie.
Yeah, take a 10-minute break.
Want to take a 10-minute break?
Let's do it for five.
Seven o'clock.
Five-minute break. You ready to start up again, Duncan?
Looks like we got a smaller crew here.
Did we lose them?
We lost a couple people, huh?
No, we lost public.
Yeah. Okay. So I would like to move on to the next item. By many, which is, sorry, I'm having my pretzel for dinner. PB 2020-32, Whichmere Harbor Real Estate LLC, applicant and owner, care of Andrew Singer, representative, seeks to amend the site plan review special permits granted in cases PB 2019-27 and PB 2020-23, or in the alternative, a new special permit to make additional alterations to the previously approved design of the beach club to redesign the pool area to include an additional pool, construct a new infant pool, create a fenced natural lawn service alley along the east side, and to make accompanying landscape and walkway revisions. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town Harwich, Section 325-55, Site Plan Review, and Chapter 400. The property is located at 23 Snowwind Road, MAP 8, Parcel P2-12, the RHS-3 and R-L zoning districts. It is my understanding that the applicant has requested a continuance to February 9th?
Yes.
So.
Thank God.
This is Mary. I'm, I vote that we continue a public hearing in the matter of PB 2020-32, Whichmere Harbor Real Estate LLC, applicant and owner, care of Andrew Singer, representative, to February 9th, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Action.
Alan Peterson.
Roll call Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
I thought you were going to say nay. Just kidding.
Definitely not.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you. We have new business. If you don't mind, it was recommended that, well, we're in the public meeting, I might want to take item number PB 2020-35 out of order and bring that up right now, which is, I'll read the language into the record. This is not a public hearing. And, but we want to get this at least started. Right. Document, of course, I had it just right here and I. PB 2020-35, Christopher W. Hour and Brian Blanchard as owners and applicants. Daniel A. Ojala, DEPLS, as representative, seek endorsement of an approval not required plan to reconfigure the existing plans into one lot of four parcels pursuant to MGL Section 81P and Section 400-9, the code of the Town of Harwich. The plan is entitled Plan of Land dated December 24, 2020, prepared by Daniel A. Ojala, PLS. Properties are located at 103 and 105 Old Harwich Road, MAP 65, Parcels R2 and R3 respectively, and are in the R-R and W-R in part zoning district. This application was received on December 30, 2020, pursuant to MGL Chapter 401, Section 81P. And the planning board has 21 days to act and file a decision with the town clerk, which is January 20. So, you want me to read the language of MGL 41?
Nope.
Okay, I don't have to do that?
Not at all.
All right.
I would defer to Dan Ojala to give a brief presentation.
That's where I was going next. Mr. Ojala, I apologize, so I mispronounced your name.
Oh, you're Americanized from Ojala, so you did well. It's not finished, we're in America, so you did, you did perfect. Dan Ojala, I'm a surveyor and civil engineer with Downkeep Engineering in Yarmouth Port. And a pretty straightforward manner here compared with a very entertaining one you just had. I was very entertained by the jousting there. Here, we've got a pretty simple matter. You look at approval not required. There's a lot of tests of adequacy away. We punted that down the road by just stating on this one that they're parcels. There's already a building on the one, the only one that would be questioned, which is Lot 1, that's 103. That's one of the Hours houses, and that's going to stay there. We're retaining about an acre and a half in a one-acre zone. It meets shape, meets frontage area, everything. And we're simply shattering off some parcels in the back for conveyance purposes, perhaps to conserve. But A and B are part of a little division that we had a preliminary plan approved on last year. So that's the main reason for this. Not that it really has any bearing on your signature tonight, but that's why we're here. And so again, the notes on the plan, I think Charlene and I went over, she's comfortable with. Does deserve endorsement under the approval not required in the case law exceptions. They're not creating lots, so would appreciate your endorsement, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you do have them.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask for any questions from the Board for Mr. Ojala here.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? So, my question is, the access, access to parcel B and parcel A is from the existing roadway easement? Is that correct?
So, just to be clear, those aren't building lots, so they, they don't need access, they're just for conveyance purposes only, and so there's some notes on the plan, but as a point of interest, we'll probably be coming in with a road from the north and that easement wouldn't even be used, that's, that's the plan right now, but that's not official, that's just what I know.
Thank you.
There was no comment from the interim town planner?
No, I have nothing, I'm comfortable that with the notes, as Dan said, with the notes on the plan regarding the buildability of parcels and access, I have absolutely no questions or concerns, and no other town departments had any comments either.
Cincinnati, and are we have a motion then, perhaps?
Mr. Chair. I move, I move that the planning board make the following findings, that the approval not required plan does not constitute a subdivision, as the, as the way shown on the plan is a public way, maintained and used as a public way, and has, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting there on or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon.
Do I have a second?
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslow.
Mary Maslow, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
And unfortunately, Arthur, you're not eligible for this, so it'll be Bill Stoltz. Very much.
Mr. Chair. I moved that, I moved that the planning board moved to endorse the approval not required plan entitled Plan of Land, number 103 and 105 Old Harwich-Brewster Road, Harwich, Massachusetts, dated December 24, 2020, prepared by Daniel A. Ojala, PLS.
Do I have a second?
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslow.
Mary Maslow, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
And Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Thank you very much, so I think that takes care of it, right?
Yes, just to let you know, Elaine will get in touch with the board members to have you all come in to endorse the plan, and Dan, when that happens, we'll let you know.
Okay, no hurry, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Maybe sometime in May.
Yeah, well, we'll have another plan assigned by then, I hope, thank you.
We won't call you, Dave.
Hey, Monica.
So, going on to new business minutes. December 12th, the 7th meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the planning board for December 17, 2020, as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Roll call Duncan Berry, aye. To Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslow.
Mary Maslow, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
So, we also have as next item, discussion on possible zoning amendments and rules and regulations amendment.
Actually, you, you missed the advisory opinions, oh no, I'm sorry, never mind me, keep going.
The possible zoning amendment. I think you've had some stuff to give to us here on this, Elaine, right?
I, I provided you with a memo, we are gonna need to make some changes to the floodplain requirements, that won't happen in 2021, but it's something that we will begin working on, there's also a suggestion for a section regarding erosion control, that's been an issue lately. Also, with regard to parking in the MRL and MRL 1 zoning, this was actually missed when we did the changes to the multifamily, this was an oversight that the 50 foot was not eliminated, so that's something the board may want to look at, and also, I made some suggestions for changes in the rules and regulations, including the fact that when the town codified the bylaws within the town back in 2008, for some reason, the planning board rules and regs, formerly known as Chapter 400, were included in the codification, it's not entirely clear why, other codes in town such as border health regulations and wetlands regulations are not part of the code of Harwich, so the board may want to consider having those removed, right now, whenever you make a change to the rules and regulations, it only gets reprinted once a year in the code itself, so if you decide you want to make changes, you know, they could be updated more frequently. And then there's a couple other things regarding the town engineer, and I have been working on updates, a lot of the drainage information is way out of date, the checklists really need revamping, and also, we require that a butter's be notified via certified mail, I think we are the only ones on God's green earth that requires that, it's not a requirement of mass general law, and quite honestly, it's quite expensive, we recently did have an application where there were 85 of butters, and the cost for mailing those out come, come this January 1, would have been in excess of $590 just for the notification to a butter, so, just some things for you all to think about, give me some guidance, not right now, but certainly at the next meeting, just so I know what direction I need to go in, or the next town planner needs to go in.
Very good. Thank you very much, that's, that takes us. Advisory opinion for, for, can we, am I on the right thing? This historical position for January 20th. Mary, assuming that you want to talk about that?
I really don't need to, that's if the, if there's anything on the board that somebody wants, if somebody wants the planning board's comment to the historic district commission.
So. Are they required to refer this to the planning board for comments, it's only if you guys want to have a comment or not?
No comment.
No comment.
Works for me.
Okay, so we've already done the item four, and now the old business, the West Harwich DCPC, just a work, we've had a couple of Zoom meetings in December with the IDCOT Commission and Charlene, and we are now in the process of, I've got to actually get back to them on developing the language for the guidelines, and coming up with a brief, they're offered to help us put together a very compact, very visual, simple way to present design guidelines that are actionable, instead of being a big, thick stack of stuff people won't read, like a couple pages, well illustrated, and so that's where we are, I'll be getting, I think, we've got something to be scheduled on Monday, we're gonna come back and try and get something out of the calendar, so we'll have something for the next, next planning board meeting. And review and possible 20 annual report.
The 2020 annual report is due in, I believe, on the 20th of January, if I'm not mistaken. You guys took a brief look at this the last time, asked me to update it as we moved into the new 2021, I have done that, the only update is that the AG did approve the zoning amendment on January 20, on January 12, but that actually wouldn't belong in this report because that happened this year, not last calendar year.
Just out of curiosity on that, Charlene, when they approved it, that's basically kind of a pro forma, what they're basically saying is, it's, it's in effect as of the day that you voted it in, September, right?
What they do is they look at to make sure the procedure and process was properly followed, you know, notification and the newspaper posting, all that kind of stuff, that we did what we were supposed to do for the purposes of, of getting the zoning amendment passed.
And they, and they also make sure that it's, that it complies with state law and doesn't conflict with anything.
Yes.
It's not, it's not really valid until they approve it.
Got it. But we're good to go, right?
If everybody's good with this report, I will submit it on your behalf.
I am good with it.
I think, Dave, I think you could put a footnote at the bottom of the page indicating that the Attorney General did approve, what the Attorney General approved and when.
I'm happy to do that, it's whatever. I'll do that.
I would suggest that if nobody objects.
I have no objection.
No objection.
The board does need to vote on this?
Okay, let's, do I vote to? Do I have a motion to accept the annual town report 2020?
Arthur Rouse, second.
David Harris, so moved.
Okay, we've got Mr. Harris for the move, Mr. Rouse for the second. The roll call Duncan Berry, aye, as amended, right, with that one footnote, Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslow.
Mary Maslow, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Any briefings or reports by members of the board? I think everybody, nobody's blinking, everybody's. I think we've had it.
I was gonna say, I hope not.
Good, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved. Second, something.
All right, Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Mary Maslow.
Mary Maslow, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse, you sure don't want to do names?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stoltz.
Bill Stoltz, aye.
You guys are such good troopers, I can't believe, this is a long meeting, we did it, thank you, Charlene, for everything.
You're welcome.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Thanks for giving it to one calendar day, Duncan.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.